Prince George's County Public Schools Superintendent Dr. William R. Heit presents Town Hall meetings to discuss school system goals, priorities, and accomplishments with staff and the community.
Thank you, thank everybody for coming this evening. And before we begin, I'm always like as superintendent of schools that we operate as a team, not non-bosses, but we actually work as a team. And many of those individuals are here today, so I want to acknowledge them at this time. First and foremost, we have our board chair, at-large member, Regina Jacobs. Representing District 1, Ms. Rosalind Johnson. At-large member, Ms. Amber Waller. And at-large member, Ms. Hathaway Beck. Fantastic, thank you for being here and thank you to all of you. I'm doing these meetings this year. We thought that it was important to try to get out and speak to both faculty members, staff members, administrators, support staff, and we're doing that around the county. But on the same evenings that we do those meetings, we also want an opportunity to talk with parents and share with all of you our strategic priorities. And we think it's really important as we talk about strategic priorities because one of the things that we think is absolutely essential is having a level of focus around our work to educate the 128,000 students here in Prince George's County. So that focus comes with our strategic plan. And we are, as many of you know, the 19th largest school system in the country, the second largest school system in Maryland. We are a suburban district, but we have many urban issues. And as we try to submit our strategic plan, we want to talk about those issues and we're going to talk about some of those today. So one of the things that we know has been a challenge for us is revenue. And over the past several years, we've had to cut significant amounts of money out of their budget. And unfortunately, that's led to increased class sizes, it's led to the reduction of the full-time equivalent to an 1,800 number, so to a degree of 1,800. That's how many people we've cut, that's how many positions we've cut over the past three years. So that's pretty substantial when you think about trying to continue the work that we're doing inside of our school system. And although that presents a challenge, one of the things that we've noticed this year is that of the 800 positions cut, there were less than 200 individuals who actually lost a job because many of those positions were vacant and they just weren't filled. We've had the best opening in my five years here, and I think that is largely attributed to the commitment of our staff members, our schools, our teachers, and administrators. We've had more grants that we've received in the past. And when you have revenue or general fund monies taken away, then you look for other ways to get resources or to get revenue. And we've been very fortunate to have the support of the U.S. Department of Education, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, the Susan and Michael Dell Foundation, the Hillside Foundation, which is, many of you saw the opening of the new Wegmans, that's a function of the Wegmans, those individuals are actually providing us with a Hillside High School-to-Work program for many of the students, so we're happy about that. Student achievement results, and although we have begun to really discover where there are challenges in and across subgroups and in and across schools, we still continue to progress. And whether state stayed flat or decreased this year, in Prince George's County, we continue to show some progress. And we're impressed by the increasing caliber of classroom instruction, and we're actually focusing on classroom instruction this year. So there are many challenges, but with challenges come opportunities. The opportunity is, and although I don't like to brag about this, but we've had to become leaner, we've had to become leaner as a school system, we've had to right-size ourselves. We must remain committed to our number-one goal, and that's student achievement. And everything should be in support of increasing student performance. We have a dedicated workforce, and that dedicated workforce will lead us to greater success. And as I indicated before, we are becoming more and more focused. And that focus is evident by our new strategic plan. A new strategic plan that has reduced the number of priorities and initiatives that we've worked inside of this system that have worked inside of the system. Several years ago, we had over 100 initiatives. And when you have that many initiatives, it becomes a little cloudy in terms of what should be done and what the core work is. And so we reduce many of those initiatives. And the most important thing is we've constructed a set of strategic priorities, and those strategic priorities really become our core work, and I'm going to talk about those momentarily. So we need to be even more focused though, and we need to make sure that our work is committed to advancing those five goals. And your effort in support of these initiatives is extremely important. So I'm going to focus the next few minutes on a presentation, and it's a PowerPoint presentation, it's around our strategic priorities. And inside of those strategic priorities, we're focusing on five goals, and that focus is based on the analysis of data, and it is to give all students a rigorous experience, a rigorous experience before they graduate from our system. We want to focus on supporting students to ensure that they have opportunities like international bachelor law, advanced placement, or some STEM-related activities, or some sort of certification in or license in a career or technical field. And we want to focus on engaging our students, and the reason you're here, our parents, and the community to ensure the success of the students. So as many of you know, we have a system inside of Maryland, and that system is the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan. And that master plan really is designed for all 23 county school districts and the city of Baltimore to implement a plan, a strategic plan, based on the analysis of data for those systems. And it's called the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan. If you pull this plan up online, you would see that it's around 600 to 700 pages. That's not all of the work that we do, it's a template that the state determines, and we fill in that template. The neat thing about the master plan is that it's one of the few, Maryland is one of the few states that actually require districts to tie their budgets and all of the fiscal pieces to the master plan. The plan reports on their progress, and it reports on progress for the previous year. And we use that information really to construct the strategies and initiatives moving forward in the current year. The plan also addresses many of the strategies that I'm going to talk about tonight, and those strategies are to support the goals, those five goals that I talked about earlier. It represents a collective perspective from many of our stakeholders. Many of you have hopefully served on your school's management and planning teams, and those teams are a critical part to the construction of these master plans. And the plan is actually submitted for review. As a matter of fact, it must be approved by our Board of Education first, and Board approves the plan, we submit that plan to the Maryland State Department of Education, we actually go up and go through our interview process, and they go through every component of the plan, and then they forward the plan to the State Board of Education, who provides final approval. And then that plan becomes the guide, if you will, for how we will operate in the current So our master plan will focus on five strategies, and all of the strategies are really designed to support what we feel is our number-one goal, and that's high student achievement. And I'm going to talk about what each of these things mean momentarily. But as you can see, the other four is highly effective teaching, safe and supportive climate, efficient and effective operations, and strong business and community partnerships. And we think that all of those things then support the high student achievement part of our plan. And when we talk about high student achievement, we have a mission and a vision to graduate all students career, college-ready. But we're starting to hear that a lot, and we're starting to hear that a lot from many different people. And unfortunately, the meaning gets lost in career and work-ready or career and college-ready. And our meaning really is around the profile of a graduate. And we want our graduate profile to change, and we want students to leave their schools equipped with the knowledge and skills that will allow them to take advantage of opportunities either in higher ed, the world of work, or in some sort of training program. And so that graduate profile is what I'm going to talk about a lot this evening. And I think it's extremely important because this is not about students being successful in the HSAs, although HSAs are important. It really is about an outcome that we anticipate or expect for all of our students as they graduate from high school. The second one is highly effective teaching. We know that the person who stands in front of the student is the most important individual to the success of that student. We also know that many parents perceive a school primarily through the effectiveness or ineffectiveness of the educator. And so if it's a good teacher, generally, it's a good situation, and generally, it's a good school. If it's not such a good situation, then people say, "Well, I'm not sure about either that school, that teacher, or that administration." So the highly effective teaching is how do we ensure that we get the most highly effective people in front of all of our students? And how do we measure that? How do we build capacity? How do we evaluate those individuals? And how do we continue to grow the most highly effective teachers, particularly with the subgroups that are the high-needs subgroup? The third is safe and supportive schools. And typically here, we talk about safe, safety, and security, but we're talking about more than just safety and security, we're talking about an environment that's conducive to learning with the students and a professional learning environment for staff and a learning environment for parents, so that we're actually fostering an environment that's conducive to learning. Safe and supportive is extremely important, and it also speaks to those critical relationships that must be formed to ensure that our students are successful. The fourth one is strong community partnerships. And there are a lot of organizations in and throughout our county, and these organizations all play a role, I believe, in the education of our schools. It also speaks to the relationship with parents here, and how do we increase the advocacy for parents, and how do we engage more parents? How do we engage more businesses? How do we learn from experts like NASA Garter, like NSA, Lockheed? How do we develop our curriculum so that students will have a greater opportunity to leave our system and work in some of those organizations? And then finally, efficient and effective operations, that's extremely important, particularly in these tough fiscal times, we have to be better stewards of money and of revenue. So how do we align ourselves to operate more efficiently and effectively becomes an essential question there. So here's an example, and I'm going to walk through one example for each of the areas. So as you can see, high student achievement, here is the goal. And based on analysis of data, we understand that there are some things that have attributed to this dynamic where all schools aren't being successful. One of the things that we know is that many of our subgroups, particularly those that are special ed, have been challenged with respect to meeting AYP. And so we have to look at reforming our special ed so that those young people are also exposed to content, and that those young people also have high expectations. We also know that if there are issues around the high school assessments, then that just cannot be an issue at the high school level. We have to begin talking about how do we structure and scope and sequence curriculum so that students will begin to develop skills that students will need in high school, in middle school, and in elementary school? And how do we scaffold those experiences so that the concepts are the same? So that we're not doing a lot of stuff in third grade, and then a lot of stuff in fourth grade, and one grade doesn't inform the other? And so part of this reform work is really how do we develop and establish structures that help us reform the high school experience for many of our students? How do we use non-traditional options? And we call those portfolio schools. But how do we use non-traditional options for students who, for whatever reason, are not being successful in the comprehensive programs? How do we use online options for some students? How do we set up different schedules? How do we use Saturdays? Those are some of the portfolio options inside of the high student achievement. The other things are how do we use quality programs of choice inside of the portfolio? One example, and I use this example frequently, next year, we're going to open a middle college. And middle college will open up on the campus of Prince George's Community College. And students who want to attend the middle college will actually go through the lottery process, and if they are accepted, they will begin their high school experience on the college campus. And at the end of four years, they not only finish with a diploma, but a two-years associate's degree in the health sciences field. So how do we use programs like that as a part of our total portfolio? So as you move across the page, there are also a set of priorities. And these priorities are not defined as the work, but they are the work of the cabinet of my team. And these are projects or priorities that each cabinet member may either own themselves or co-own with another division leader. And as you can see, special ed then becomes one of those priorities because the data have indicated to us, the data has suggested that we have to change our delivery of instruction for students with IEPs, and we have to expose those students to content and to high expectations. Middle school is the same. So we have to look at middle school math and make sure that the middle school math is preparing sufficiently students to move into high school. Other programs and projects inside of our district are other streams of work that are also happening, all in support of high student achievement. We were fortunate enough this year to be awarded a, it's called a 1003G grant, it's a school improvement grant from the Department of Education. And that grant is really designed around turning around low-performing schools. And we had four schools this year that were eligible. And that's the turnaround school that you see because at the end of the day, we want that to impact this whole student achievement piece. Performance management is another big part of this. And why is performance management a part? Because we have to check in at different intervals to understand where we are relative to our outcomes. And as I go back, and I want to make sure this is clear, that inside of each of these goals, and I know it's five boxes, inside of each of these goals, there are outcomes, expected outcomes, there are milestones, there are key performance indicators, and there are strategies associated with these. So at any given point in the year, we can check to see how we're doing relative to all of those outcomes. And we don't have that information available tonight because we're still finalizing some of the key performance indicators. But we intend to make that information public by system and by school so that individuals can go on their website in a not-too-distant future and look at where we are relative to those outcomes by school. The second goal is highly effective teaching. And this was something that I was sharing earlier with our staff, and many of the staff people were teachers here, and many were administrators. And I shared with them that we're actually undertaking a human capital strategy, and that is really around making sure that for every ounce of accountability that we are expecting, we're building an ounce of capacity. And it's important to develop individuals to work inside of this new model. But it's also important to reorient our district so that our district is school-facing and classroom-facing. And right now, that district is central office-facing, which means Dr. Heit said this, or Central Office said this, or Cabinet did this. So therefore, every school must operate and look very similar. And we want to flip that paradigm, and we want to flip that so that the decisions about education are made closest to where students are being educated. And there's still statutory and regulatory requirements, however, we want those decisions to be made a lot closer to where teaching and learning is occurring, not the father's point of way, central office. And then central office then serves as a support mechanism to provide the schools with what they need in order to meet the needs of their students. That's a long description for a very complex human capital reform that we're doing, and some of the tools that we're using or strategies inside of that is our FIRST grant. And our FIRST grant is a financial incentive award, and we were awarded $18 million several years ago to create a pay-for-performance model. And that pay-for-performance model is really designed to look at the achievement of students in their class, look at the achievement of schools, award professional development, award individuals who are teaching in high-needs areas, and consider the evaluation. And if all of those things work out right, then the teacher receives an incentive, or the principal receives an incentive. That's called the FIRST program. The second one up there is called the Framework for Teaching. And the Framework for Teaching is really a new model to evaluate the pedagogy and evaluate the instruction in and around their schools. But it's not so much the evaluation, what it's creating is a set of conversations, professional conversations, where teachers are talking about their science, the science of teaching. And they're talking to each other about it. And what happens when that occurs? They have direct feedback about their practice. And it's a lot easier for teachers to recognize those things that should change, and they share those practices or recommendations or suggestions with each other. And so we're finding that the Framework for Teaching has really developed this culture where individuals are beginning to talk to each other about the science and the art of teaching. And as you walk across this page, you can see the cabinet priorities, just as the previous page. The goal is highly effective teaching. The strategic initiative are those things around human capital reform, however, there's other work that's going on inside of highly effective teaching, and those things move across the page, as you see there. Safe and supportive schools, I talked about this earlier. And this is all about the interventions and the climate and the supports that we provide for students. And we have a group that's actually reviewing the discipline committee's recommendations. We also are working with our partners in mental health, social services, to actually create wraparound supports for many of our students. And we're going to talk about this a little later, but this is a good place for me to introduce some of my staff who are here as well. I should have done this at the beginning, but it slipped my mind. Representing our, actually my deputy superintendent, Dr. Anita Coleman-Potters, she's in the back. We have a chief academic officer, this is Dr. Dwayne Abregas, he is here with us. We have a chief of student services, Ms. Karen Lynch, she is here with us as well. Wanda Williams, who's here from the regional office. So we have staff who are here actually to help respond to any questions that you may have inside of those categories. But the reason I wanted to mention staff is because we have the former director of social services, who is now our director, our chief of student services. And it was, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. Brent, I'm sorry, I didn't even see you. I didn't know what you were saying, Darrell. Brent Johnson is a budget director. Brent, stand up so we can all see you. Thank you, I'm sorry, I missed you. So the interventions actually are very important, and how do we utilize resources to align our strategies and our work to do that? So that we're not duplicating services at the county level, at the state level, and at the school level. The strong community partnership, this is where many of our parents come in. And this is the work that we're really attempting to do to better engage our parents, to empower other parents, and to make sure that our parents have the resources that they need in order to help their young people. We're pleased that we've opened three parent academies, most of them have been at this end of the county. And those academies are really designed to engage parents in an effort to be better advocates for their children. And secondary school reform is a part of how we are also engaging other parents and other partners. And those partners are like NASA Garter, Lockheed, Aerojet, many other individuals like that to help us to audit our curriculum, to audit our professional development so that our students have a better opportunity of working in their organizations. And finally, effective and efficient operations. And under this goal, you can see here, it deals with a capital improvement plan, and how does the capital improvement plan really align itself to support the things on the previous page? And how do we make sure that it's in support of those strategic priorities inside of our district? And one thing that's really exciting coming up, and that's student-based budgeting. And we're working with an organization right now who is attaching a unit cost to everything. And in the future, and hopefully the not-too-distant future, we will have a student-based budget. What does that mean? That means that instead of a dollar amount that we give to schools, so we assign schools a dollar amount based on their students, the dollars actually follow the children. Which means that if you would think of it virtually as their backpack, and if we spend $12,000 per student, that $12,000 would follow that student to school A, B, or wherever. And then at the school level, they would be able to make the recommendations for how they spend those monies. Inside of statutory and regulatory requirements and contractual requirements, but nonetheless, student-based budgeting changes the, changes the practice of central office making all of those decisions. And this way, schools make those decisions. So if schools, if there are unique needs for a particular school, then they get a part of money, and they choose to use that part of money based on the needs of their community. Because at the end of the day, we're going to hold schools accountable. And now we're holding them accountable, and we're telling them what to do with their money. And we want to change that and hold them accountable and say, "Here's the outcome that we want for you, and this is what we're going to hold you to, and then here's your money, here's how you spend that." That's student-based budgeting, that's some time off and some time away, that's going to take some time to develop that type of program. And process improvement, and that's really around effective and efficient, how do we create the structures and processes to operate more efficiently? And as I talked about earlier, performance management, and this is really measuring the value that every individual in their system is having towards student achievement.
Dr. May, could you please explain how we're allocating our funds to our schools now? I don't kind of understand the difference, I'm sorry.
Sure, I'll be glad to. So right now, we have a staffing formula. And that staffing formula is based on a number of students. Yeah, so we have, so let's say that we have 128,000 students in a district. And that 128,000 students divided by whatever class number is, a teacher ratio, and you divide that, and that's their budget amount. So if schools get a certain number of kids, they get this many staff, and they get this program, they get this level of transportation. And so if you attach a dollar amount to all of those things, and then divide that by the number of students, you also get an amount of money. And then it's moving that amount of money and allowing that amount of money to be sent to the school as opposed to the staff. So why is that important? It's important when then students begin to move. And if students move, it's a lot harder And if students move, it's a lot harder for us to, so if ten kids move from five schools, it's a lot harder for us to move a point-one teacher. But we can move the funds to follow the student. And that's a, that's a different, that's a different way to think about that. So it's, I mean, so that's how, so staffing is defined. And staffing, our budget is based on a certain number of students, which equal a certain number of teachers. And then every school is allotted a number of teachers.
Then with regards to the other point you were making, you recently are saying we're trying to move away from a top-down system, to go towards a bottom-up system, as long as we get the outcome that we need with regards to our student performance. Is that the other point?
And I wanted to make sure that point is emphasized. So that can't, accountability has to be a part of that. So the accountability part is the part that makes that work. You can't do that without accountability. Because then people are doing, you know, one thousand blooming flowers. I mean, it's not, it may not result in anything.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Then I wanted to talk a little bit about the profile of a graduate. And I talked earlier about this notion of high student achievement, and high student achievement really being around, students being college and career-ready. But I want to talk more about the profile of the graduate that we want to graduate from our system. And that profile will really include those knowledge, the knowledge and skills that we want students to be equipped with when they leave our schools. And we want every student to have an opportunity for a STEM experience, or an AP experience, or an IB experience, or some sort of portfolio or career and/or technical assessment. So why is that important? That's important that, when I think about a couple of students. Both students happen to be from Sutland. I know we have some students joining us today from Sutland. But both students happen to be from Sutland. One young man worked on a student-built house. We have thirty-six houses that we built across the county. And this young man is a junior at Sutland High School. And this young man has siblings who are in college. And the young man talked about the fact that he doesn't want to go to college, but he wants to work with his hands. And so at the end of his junior year, which was last year, he started working on a student-built house. He got into carpentry. He enjoyed it. He sat for the certifying exam, and he was successful. So at the end of his junior year, he had a certificate in carpentry. So I said to him, so what are you going to do next year as a senior? Are you going to still work on a student-built house? He goes, of course. I said, are you going to just try to learn more about carpentry? He says, no, I want to move to electrical. And at the end of my senior year, I want to finish with an electrical certification. And so if you think about that with respect to the profile of a graduate, and what that young man is equipped with upon graduating from our system, he has tools now that he can use, so to speak, to go into the world of work, or to go into an institution of higher ed if he so chooses. The second young lady is a lady also at Sutland. And this young lady talked about the fact that she has, she's taking her senior courses at the community college, because she's exhausted all of the, all of the courses inside of that course offering. She comes to Sutland for two classes, I think. So I said, what are you going to do next year? And she says, well, I'm going to Richmond. I said, well, that's interesting. I used to teach at Richmond. And she says, I'm talking about the one in the UK. So she is actually going on a full scholarship to the UK, to Richmond University. And she says she wants to go on to study at Oxford and so forth and so on. But I want to make sure that our students, irrespective of where they come from or graduate from, they have the ability to either head into the work world with something that they can use, or if they want to go to Richmond in the UK, they can. And that's the profile of a graduate that we're talking about. The other part of this is really expanding career and technical options and programs. And expanding what we expect students to do once they complete those programs. And that's an important point. Because we have sixteen thousand young people in these programs right now. But we only have two hundred that sit for an assessment every year. Which means that we could have students sitting in a cosmetology class, a Cisco certification class, a HVAC class, and they never do anything with that. They only sit there for the experience. So we want that certifying assessment to be part of that experience. So that when they leave our school system, they're equipped to do something. Either move into the world of work, as I indicated, or to higher ed if they so choose. And then the final part to this is that this cannot just be a high school initiative. We have to change our scope and sequence, particularly as it relates to curriculum, to ensure that students have some of the fundamental skills in order to access these types of programs at the high school level. So it means that students will need more, or higher levels of math in middle and in elementary, more exposure to language in elementary and in middle, and more lab science. They also will need to communicate differently and write, and write persuasively. So those are the, that's identifies that profile, or this new graduate profile that we want for all of our children. And the reason we use by 2017, which is not on this slide, is because we have to then prepare the curriculum at the lower grades in order to prepare students to be exposed to these types of programs. So a strategic plan, in a nutshell, focuses on five key areas. And those areas, as I indicated before, all lead to high student achievement. But as you can see, all of those others are really critical to that success. So the whole point with this is to focus our work around these five core areas with a view towards increasing that profile of a graduate from our school system. So I think that was the last slide, so that concludes the presentation part of this. So I'd be glad to take any comments about the strategic plan, and I'm going to ask that you come to the mic.
I'm Darla Heintz, and I teach here at Northwestern High School. Of your five goals, I noticed that one was safe and supportive schools. And I have a serious concern about security issues here at Northwestern. As you know, there is a, an upswing or an uptick in gang activity, particularly MS-13. We are a minimum of two security guards short here. We have no cameras in the stairwells. The cameras which we do have, if you look at the pictures, unless you really know who it is, it's, we need cameras with better resolution. Okay, we really desperately need this. Last week, a teacher was pushed to the ground, and it is my understan, to the floor, excuse me, to the floor. It is my understanding that this student, although he'll be suspended for a few days, will be allowed back in this school. I think you, you mentioned the, the new name for it being portfolio schools. I want to know if in the future, we're, you're planning on expanding portfolio schools. Please understand that I feel all students have a right to an education, but I think all teachers also have a right to a safe and secure environment.
That's right. Yeah, thank you for that question. And first and foremost, you should be, you'll be happy that we're actually installing, we purchased a whole lot of new cameras, and this is one of the schools that fills, where those cameras are supposed to be installed. The, the other thing is, I don't know, the security guards, I have to check on that. I don't know if that's a reduction of security guards, or if they're just vacancies. Because it was a two different issues. If it's just a vacancy, we can get those filled. If there's a reduction in the number of security individuals, then we have to talk, that's a, that's a bigger conversation. Because that means they have to be pulled from somewhere else. You mentioned the MS-13 and proliferation of activity with that group. And part of that is why we have formed a gang task force, particularly for this area. We, they know many of the young people who are participating in and with those gangs, it's with the city of Hyattsville, it's with the Prince George's Police Department, and with our security team. And so many of the things that we get, or we're able to resolve, is because we have that information long before, I mean, when kids are coming out of the neighborhoods. So that was the answer. And then the third thing, oh, the portfolio schools? We already have sixty additional seats. And part of those seats were really designed for us to place students. So that if we have students that are represent, and generally it's a small percentage of students, and those one or two percent of the students take up a hundred percent of your administrators' and teachers' time, because they're acting out. And we've worked out a, a protocol really to place some students. And it's also an acknowledgement that some students actually will not, cannot function in a comprehensive school. So you have to find other ways to, to educate those young people. So just come to the mic, please.
Dr. Heit, my name is Miles Hernig, I teach at High Point High School. And I'll cut to the chase because of, of time. You mentioned earlier Superman and other issues regarding that. I think one of the biggest problems that students and teachers are faced with is that our schools are under the business model, which is really ruining most of our schools. So much of the data is showing that the business model doesn't work, merit pay doesn't work. It's counterproductive. It sets teachers upon teachers. It shows the students that they're completely devalued, that they're more of a commodity. And I think with the writings of Dr. Ravitch, of Rick Ayers and others, so much data is showing that the way we need to educate our students is by bringing teachers into the decision-making. And pretty much if the business model is failing, fire the business leaders. They're the ones who are, we think, ruining much of our school system. I would like to pass on to you some articles that you can read on your own, some that I've written, but some that have been written by others.
Thank you, thank you. And in fact, one of the reasons, one of the reasons, one of the reasons we're going to student-based budgeting is, now, part of it is the business, but it's recognizing that the business is at the school. It's not us to tell you how to run your business. The schools should be making that decision. And if students are coming to you, and those students represent an amount of money, then those decisions actually should be made at the school. And it's also one of the reasons why we have really, we've really invested in the development of capacity. Because one of the things that I truly believe is, for every ounce of accountability, expect an ounce of, or have to develop an ounce of capacity. And we must do that in order to develop ourselves. And that's why we talk about teacher development. And that's why we just don't have a merit pay system. We have a system that emphasizes professional development, working in a hard-to-staff school, and not only the evaluation, but the performance of the schools and the students. And, and I would caution between, I would caution against grouping all of the models into one pot. Because the models vary, I mean, greatly, across the country. And I know that individuals like, you mentioned Diane Ravitch, who I know well, and you mentioned some other individuals. And so I don't, I don't think those represent models that all schools are looking for. We understand that a lot of those things don't work. And that's why you can't use one indicator for a high-stakes decision like the effectiveness of a teacher. You can't use one indicator. We all understand that. You also have to take into account working conditions. You have to take into account growth, and you have to take into account other things that, just then, other than student performance on one indicator, which in that case would be the MSA or the HSA.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Adams, I teach math and science at Carney, Carney Hills Elementary School. We are all going to be facing the new Common Core standards and the new test come 2014, 2015. We're talking about building capacity. In order to improve that, what is the school system's plan for improving the capacity of math at the elementary levels? The reason you have a middle school problem is because students can't do arithmetic. So where are we? We've got three years, I'd like to see us get ahead of the curve.
Yeah, and one of the things that, I was just at a, a conference where they were talking about the new assessments. And there, there are two schools of thought out there on assessments, and these assessments will actually look at dipsticks that will be able to define a student's progress over a period of time. But with respect to your question, one of the, one of the items that we're requesting inside Race to the Top, that, those monies, is a professional development around math and science that will be done, it's going to be an audit first, an audit of our curriculum versus what's taught, versus the materials, and it's going to be performed by College Board. And they're going to actually look at all of our content, our curriculum content, not only at the high school level, but at the middle school level to make sure that it's scaffolding, and then at the elementary level to make sure it's preparing. And our problem right now is that part of this, and I can't always blame this stuff on the state, but part of this is that one grade doesn't predict the performance in the next grade. It's not necessarily scaffold at all. So you can't look at a child's fourth-grade results and determine or predict what they're going to do in the fifth grade, because, I mean, it's different. And so part of that, at the state level, has to change. Number one, it can't be five miles wide, and it has to be more focused. And, but my fear is, with the Common Core, that people will just look at where language matches, and will miss the, will miss the whole purpose of the Common Core standards, which is going deeper into the concepts.
Thank you for letting us address you. My name's Jeanne Mignon, I teach here at Northwestern High School. I actually have sort of three kind of connected questions. The first one has to do with testing, which I know we all have to live with. But it's very troubling that testing, the first test when we get back is in October, and it's usually for kids who didn't do well in May. I just have to comment on this. It seems that it would make more sense to have a little more delay there. So kids, I mean, what did they learn between May and October? And then we wind up on the high school with a level, particularly with a lot of interruption, even though the people schedule as well as they can. I mean, it's not a degradation to anybody's trying to schedule. It just seems that if you didn't know it in May, what did you learn between May and October before you retake it? So I'd like to point that out. The other thing that was troubling recently was to hear repeatedly on WTOP that we had a seventeen-to-one ratio of students to teachers, when many of my fellow teachers, you know, we are facing larger and larger classrooms, so I was going to ask you about how that would be determined. But the final thing is, I think that the stress on AP is wonderful. I think that, and I'm also an AP teacher, so you know, I have a little bias there. But I also have to say, it's, one of the things I hope that's happening is that we are joining together at the bottom to get these kids ready to move toward the AP to the top. In other words, that it's more lateral.
No question.
And, and that's what I'm hoping that I'm going to hear. Because one of the things that, you know, we put a lot of emphasis on the HSA, and I understand you, we have to. I'd like to see that kind of focus and excitement going on for the AP kids, because they really need that. They, and, and I want to share this with you, you know, we say a lot of negatives to you, or a lot of questions. The fact is that the kids really are, I do believe totally, when we raise the bar, the kids meet the bar. And I'm proud of my students, I know that there are other AP teachers here, I just want to share that part with you, because it's easy for me to say, why not, why not? But I got to tell you some of the good things. And the final thing, part of that is, I don't know what they do to sort of follow these kids when they leave school, when I say they, the state. Because that, I think, is, ultimately, that's what we're really about. So I put a lot out there, and I thank you for letting me.
Great, great. Did we get a points on tape? Did you make sure that you got it? Okay, we're going to play that over and over again.
Okay.
So thank you for that comment. And so a couple of things, and I'm not, I, I heard your first statement about the testing, and I actually don't know enough about that to, to talk about it intelligently here, so I'm going to get more information. I don't see Dwayne Arregas here, so he'll probably be here at the next meeting. So I'll, I'll get that out and get that into, and get that back to everyone who's here. The, the other thing is that I couldn't agree with you more. And I think that part of the AP, and if in fact, I think quite frankly, there's too much emphasis on a rudimentary assessment. Which means that it becomes our ceiling. And that's where we want kids to aspire. And if you know that if all of our kids passed the HSA, and only did that, they're not eligible to enter the university system in the state of Maryland. And so we have to change that construct so that it's by virtue of getting students through something that is at a much higher level, that the HSA and the MSA and whatever else the state wants to throw at us becomes a foregone conclusion. And so that's part of where we're trying to make sure we go, but you're right, it has to, it cannot start with you, the AP teacher. We have to start that when students enter kindergarten. And the other thing was TOP, the seventeen-to-one, I don't know where that came from, because we don't have a seventeen-to-one ratio. Where's my Dar, Dar, I mean, media guy. Darrell, do you remember them? Darrell, do you remember them saying 17 to 1? Now, I was real clear to them that they, we, I mean, 17 to 1, I was like, 17 to 1? What district are you talking about? Yeah, but that's not, we would have never said 17, because that's not even close. I mean, I wish it was close, but that's not. But while we're talking about class sizes, I just want, because I don't have a chance to really address this, particularly with staff members, to reduce by one the number of students in a class in a system our size. To reduce by one is a $13 million cost. That's to reduce by one. And so to reduce by two, and you see how quickly that begins to add up. And so we, that's why those conversations or decisions are so hard when you're trying to save jobs and not impact the classroom as much. That's why you, we had to go to, unfortunately, increasing, and we had to go the other way. But yeah, it's because of the number, because the staffing ratio carries with it a group of students. So let's say 20, if we're 27 to 1 right now, on average, I'm just using this hypothetically, and we drop to 25 to 1, that means for every 25 kids, we have to add another staff member. And that's, and then, so for that number, then when you start multiplying and adding that up, it comes to 13 million. And that's for, that's for the one student. And that's across the system. That's not just elementary or middle, that's across the system. And then you can target at grade levels, and it's less. And that's why we try to make sure that we maintain a grade average or a staffing average at the kindergarten and pre-K and first, I think.
Hello, Dr. Height.
Hello.
I was going to talk about class size, too, although I think I should change it to classroom size. The, your point of the parochial school in my youth and younger teaching days, private schools, Catholic schools were known for their discipline and such, so you could have elementary school class sizes of 60. And I wasn't one of those. But when I was around, around the high school time, they were noted for the same kind of things, but what they weren't noted for, and the public schools where I was from were noted for, were science labs. Catholic schools, the private schools couldn't afford to have a state-of-the-art science lab, and the public schools did. And I'm an art teacher, and I teach studio portfolio classes, in the older sense, in here, yeah. And there's a space problem when the class sizes are increased. It's connected, I think, to all those four goals, the student achievement, the safety, et cetera, et cetera. And then I looked around, and, or I looked around, and when you have required classes, remedial classes, whatever they're called, advanced placement classes, they all take space up in the curriculum. There isn't a whole lot of room left for classes that are offered to the population of a school, which has to be, most of them, not the kids that are struggling to pass HSAs, one way or the other, and the kids that are taking AP classes, which by the way are double periods. So that takes even, that part in the middle, all those kids in the middle, don't have a whole lot of things that are there for them to take. They get overcrowded, those, whatever is around for them to take. And there's, they certainly, I'm sure in our school, I know in our school, but certainly the other ones, their mentality is, if I could get out of school at noon time and have early release, which they got rid of a few years, a couple of years ago, which was a good idea and a bad idea. It was a good idea because it was a bad idea. But it's a bad idea to get rid of it, because where are they going to put those kids? Those kids haven't got around to saying, well, I have to take this class and this class and this class, because as you said, University of Maryland will take them, because they haven't got enough classes. We went from the sixth-period day to the eighth-period day. Everybody did it without, teaching one extra class with no extra money, and no extra money for either salary or supplies or books. And there was no complaint, because once people got used to it, they liked that 90-minute class. That 90-minute class increased the production of kids that were doing things, and the use of the materials, and the use of space, and the use of all of that other kind of stuff, three or four, five-fold. It was a great thing. And then they switched from the four-by-four, they called it, to the AB, and that doubled the use of the classroom and the space. And there was, there was no discussion about what would be better and why are we doing this? But as I said, well, that notwithstanding was, it, you had to have twice the number of textbooks, you had to have all sorts of stuff like that, that, to be briefer, all of these things are things pulling away at, I would say, the excellence of teaching in the classroom. You just are running around. The money for salaries, of course, is, most of this, most of the budget is the salaries of the employees. That's the same everywhere. I suppose there's no answer to that when you say, well, let's see, we'd like to offer more classes, more courses that kids could take to go to those places like Maryland. Why don't they advertise that building program you mentioned? That building program's been around for decades, and they've sold 100, 200, $300,000 houses every year, for as long as I can remember.
Yeah.
If I tell a kid about it, they, in a class, they don't know about it.
Yeah.
And there's other programs like that.
Absolutely. And next year, we're going to open up a program called Middle College. And Middle College is a program that's going to be on the campus of the community college, and students who are entering high school will begin their experience on the college campus. At the end of four years, they will finish with a diploma and a two-year associate's degree in the health sciences field. So what we know is that will likely, over a four-year period, if we had, add 100 kids a year, that it will draw kids out of some of these more comprehensive and larger high schools. The other part to that story is that it's why we're going through secondary reform as well, because we have to balance the enrollment across the county, not just in, like, one school versus another school. And quite frankly, we know that the fewer, the fewer seats are available in the northern part of the county for high schools. We already know that. It needs another one. And we have to work to address that. The last thing.
Are the community colleges going to be teaching classes in the, in the high schools?
No, the community, well, we have that now in some places. So we have dual enrollment classes right now, and those kids who are having college credit at the, at the high school courses. But the other part about that is, just as we talked about budgets that are more responsive to the needs of schools, we need schedules that are more responsive to the desires of students. So we have a set of classes, and students must choose that set of classes. Instead, and most of the other districts where I've been.
That was, that was what all those things I mentioned.
Yeah, we've actually, we've actually said, okay, what is it that you're interested in, inside of our curriculum document? And then you have kids sign up first, and then determine what class is where. And so that's another part of that, that secondary reform, and that's just changing how we schedule students right now. So it's more responsive to the needs of students, understanding those graduation requirements.
Okay. I'm Sue from Biltsville Academy. As you know, we went from an elementary school into an academy to go to eighth grade. Last year, we added seventh grade. This year, we added eighth grade. And not only that, but we became a choice school that received quite a few students. I've been trying to find out where to get the TI-84s for the seventh and eighth graders. We got some last year for our new seventh graders, but now we're short like 185. I've contacted Dr. Whitehead, they said they've been talking to the fiscal person, but if you want to have these academies and you want us to grow, you can't tie our hands behind our backs to try and do our jobs.
Right. So one of the things, Dr. Potter's in the back, so we heard that, and we put, we put money in the budget to really provide the, for the needs of those students. So I, quite frankly, don't know why they're not there yet. But, so thank you for, yeah, thank you for raising that point. Oh, I know why, because you got 100 kids at the last minute. I mean, that's, that's 120, yes, 120. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Elaine Levin, and I teach at Central High School. I'm a history teacher, and I'm a transplant from upstate New York. And I came here four years ago. When I was teaching in upstate New York, I had a 95% passing rate on the World History Regions exam. And I have received some phenomenal professional development since being in Prince George's County. In fact, that's one of the things I kind of brag to my former colleagues about, is the awesome professional development I've had here. But my passing rate at Central High School for the HSA, when I was teaching government, right now I'm doing IB, World History, and I'm the AVI coordinator, was in the low 60%. And I think that that's a really good example, because I know I'm a much better teacher now, after all this great professional development, than I had in my first years teaching in upstate New York, where I got a 95% passing rate. So I just wanted to mention that, in addition to some other concerns I had, because one of the things we've kind of mentioned is, get all these great teachers who are getting these, you know, high, good observations, and I've gotten all good observations, bring them into Central High School, and see if the scores go up, kind of make a switch. And that'll really give you the answer that everybody's been debating about the quality of the teaching impacting, and it does, of course, but impacting it to the level that the debate has focused on. Okay? And that's been my concern. The other thing is that I've been waiting to hear people talk about the issue of substance abuse in the public high schools. And I serve on the Student Assistance Program. It's one of the committees I joined my first year of teaching. And I'm very committed to it. But what we have seen at our school is students who were referred to the program, but come back into an environment, and a lot of people will tell you, who've been in recovery programs, it's people, places, and things. They come back into an environment where they are surrounded by students who are continuing to use drugs, have access to drugs, and are bringing drugs into the school. And because of the concern in Prince George's County, it seems to me, on expulsion rates and on suspension rates, that the students, our security team is working tirelessly to build a case against, and building a case against, have those students arrested, they locate drugs on that student, weapons on that student, and after the expulsion hearing, they are put right back into the school. And as you said, it seems to be the same kids. And what I wanted to pose to you as a question. Okay. By focusing on graduation rates and limiting the number of expulsions of students out of concern for meeting guidelines, state guidelines, are we inadvertently creating a more high-risk academic environment that makes it less likely students will have a strong academic foundation? That's my question.
So, so part of this is, and I'm going to point out another staff member, and it's Ms. Karen Lynch. She's over on the side. She's trying to be incognito, but Ms. Lynch is formerly the director of Support Services, not Support Services. She was formerly Director of Social Services for the state and the county, and she did such a good job, we hired her as Chief of Student Services. So she is actually working on this very issue, both issues. So she's working on this issue around substance abuse. And we actually, right now, have a group that's looking at the suspension information, the task force recommendations, the expulsion recommendations. And I want to be clear on something. It's not, now, we understand, we have to educate students because they're living in their community, and that, I mean, if they don't finish school, then it does impact the community. However, I want you to hear me on this, that no one is saying that no students will ever be expelled. No one is saying that. In fact, we still have students expelled. And when students commit crimes, and they do things that are against the code of student conduct, we actually don't have a choice. The conduct is real clear on that. And I have no problem making and taking that recommendation to the Board of Education. So this notion of safe and secure is extremely important, but equally important is the fact that, understanding that, we have to educate our students. All can't be educated in a comprehensive environment, and students who are tearing up the place actually shouldn't get to stay there. They shouldn't get to stay there. They should go other places. And as a former high school principal, I had my share of kids that I helped get to other places. They're successful now, but they couldn't stay in my school because they were tearing it up. And we have to make sure that we address those students by providing them with the environment, wherever that environment may be, so that they are successful. And I'm a competitive person, so I'm always comparing us to everybody else. And so I do look at Baltimore City, and I compare their numbers. And I do look at Montgomery County, and I compare their numbers. And many people say, well, it's Montgomery, it's Prince George's. I actually don't subscribe to that. I think we all have kids. And when we have 22,000 suspensions, and Baltimore has 9,000, and Montgomery has 6,000, then, you know, I want to, I mean, and, so, we can't put everybody out either. But we have to be able to address those issues, and we have to be able to address it in a way that's meeting the needs of students and meeting the needs of our staff members. But I want you to understand, schools will be safe and secure, and we have to, and we have to get better at that, and that's why Ms. Lynch is studying that issue with the group. And we're also using a set of attorneys, including the board attorney, to really look at that issue.
Yeah, my name is Barbara Cook, and I'm the ESAL Chair here at Northwestern High School. And I'd like to address ESAL students and the HSAs. As I understand it, none of the high schools with a large ESAL population made AYP in the ELL subgroup. I believe that that's because of the changes that were made in the ESAL curriculum over the past couple of years. We used to have four levels of ESAL. It was compressed into three levels. Our ESAL students used to get waivers when they were taking the HSA content courses in 12th grade. Now, because the MSDE says that all ESAL students must have an adequate opportunity to meet the HSA requirements, our ESAL students take the HSAs now and the HSA content classes in 11th grade. Many of our students who are still considered ESAL by 12th grade, come into the system, come into US schools in eighth or ninth grade. Our population tends to come from rural areas, in El Salvador especially, where their education standards were not the same as in the US. In three and four years, they're expected to meet the HSA requirements. How's that going to happen? I don't see, this is, you know, what's happening is not, certainly not based on research.
It's not going to happen. It's not going to happen.
Okay. So what's being done to address that?
And so, so part of the, part of the, part of the issue around No Child Left Behind was that it was growth over time until a certain date, and then 100% had to be proficient. And so it's, I mean, we expect kids who come to the country in 2014 to learn on their way over. That's not going to happen. And so, so part of this is really looking at the reauthorization of the elementary and secondary school in No Child Left Behind, and restructuring that in a way that actually can measure growth of students. And growth of students based on how they arrived, as opposed to getting to some level of proficiency at a point in time. And everybody in the state is struggling with this issue. And not only did, we have high schools that missed it in the ESAL group, in the, but many of the other districts with high ESAL populations had the same thing. As a matter of fact, Dr. Grasnick indicated at the meeting recently with the superintendents, that in two years, it's not likely to be a high school in the state under these current criteria that will meet AYP, simply because it, so we have to talk about, then, how do we restructure the regulations around that? Now, saying all of that, there's still an exposure to content issue that we have to make sure that those students are exposed to, just as there's students with IEPs and students in, who are coming from circumstances of poverty. So it's exposure to content. Unfortunately, the assessments measure language acquisition. They don't measure content knowledge. And then if the student doesn't have the language yet, irrespective of whether they can do math, they're not successful, because it's a language acquisition assessment. And so we have to change that, that dynamic. However, in classrooms, we also have to make sure that the same level of high expectations around questioning, experiences, strategies are provided to those students as well. And that's suggesting that they aren't, but we have to just make sure. Not only that group, but students with IEPs as well. Well, thank you for that point, it's a great question.
Okay, can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
Also, this school has almost a fifty percent Latino population. We lost our parent liaisons, we have nobody on our professional staff that is bilingual. How are we supposed to increase parental involvement, encourage parental involvement without a Spanish-speaking person on our staff?
And, so, and, how many staff people are here?
I'm sorry?
How many staff people? Hundred, hundred and seventy-five? Yeah.
I'm sorry. We have no parent professionals.
Oh, okay, I was going to say.
Administrative counselors, but.
Okay.
Counselors.
Yeah.
Right.
Sure.
Yes, exactly.
Sure, but it becomes, it becomes, then we would love to.
When we're talking about trying to deal with gang issues, trying to deal with personal issues that students have that affect their attendance and academic performance and their parents' education.
Yeah, and it's, it's the amount of money we have in the pot. And inside of that pot, what are we choosing to do with it? And I chose this year to make sure that we had teachers in classrooms, and some of the other things unfortunately were hard decisions, because we didn't want to, we didn't want to lay off anybody, but they were hard decisions, but we, I chose a classroom. And I chose a classroom because I thought that that was, I mean, the most important thing, and I still think that. But by the same token, how do we then help schools utilize other resources to provide those services?
Yeah.
And that's another reason we're going to student-based budgeting, because then that's a school-based decision. They may say, okay, then, here at this school, based on that data, we choose to hire these people, this group of people, instead of this group of people, and they'll have the decision, I mean, they'll have the ability to make that, those types of decisions. They can't do that now. We tell them what they get.
Good evening, my name is Donna Christie, and I'm a school psychologist for PG County. I'm currently assigned to Vansville Elementary School as well as Charles H. Flowers High School, which means I'm one psychologist for over three thousand students. I'm also one of twelve neuropsychologists for the county, so if you do the math on that, it's like one for every ten thousand students. I watched your PowerPoint presentation and I saw that you had a lot of focus on the special education population, which are my babies.
Right.
School psychologists are the experts in the school on special education, children with disabilities, we support the teachers with, especially, we have such a drive towards inclusion, putting, you know, as many kids as possible in their least restrictive environment. And you have general education teachers coming to us, how do I meet the needs of all these children? How, and we need to do a lot of consultation, there's a lot going on. We have legal mandates, IEP assessments, IEP meetings, all of our dates are based on calendar days, not school days. Our capacity at this point is very limited in our ability to help and support the school staff, which we would love to be able to do more. I'm at my Vansville, two days a week, I'm at Flowers, two days a week, I spend one of those days in each of those schools, all day in IEP meetings or sit meetings. That gives me one day a week just to do the testing. There's no time to spend time in the classrooms, meeting with teachers, meeting with parents. And so we need to increase the capacity, we could be doing so much more. You talked about safe and orderly schools, we're the experts on behavior and how to deal with behavior in the classroom. We're not able to meet those needs in the schools at this point because we just don't have the capacity.
Thank you. And I want.
Oh, whatever. Just a plug. We're also, as the experts, we have phenomenal professional development, and I want to credit, our administrators are here.
Yes.
The advantage of being a large school system is that we spend a lot of money on supplies, so the publishers bring us fantastic, you know, professional development. I was sitting at an IEP meeting about a month ago, presenting to the parent, a lawyer-involved IEP meeting, saying, we need to do a better assessment of your child's needs so that we can know how best to meet your child in a classroom. And I'm thinking, you know, well, they ask, what would you like to be able to do more than what we've already done, listing off, and they're like, are you qualified to do that? I said, well, the authors of those instruments are the ones who came and trained us on those. On top of that, I'd like to extend to you and your cabinet in terms of increasing your involvement and knowledge of special education and disabilities, our department does ongoing professional development with each other. On September nineteenth, we're doing training, a group of us on our own, developed their own training on autism, assessing autism as well as the attentional processes. And so on September fifteenth, if you'd like to, or any member of your cabinet would like to come out and join us.
September fifteenth?
September, oh, I'm sorry, November nineteenth.
November nineteenth? And just for your information, I was at the IEP training.
Yes.
Several weeks ago at John Carroll.
Okay.
So I actually sat through the training.
So feel free to come out and join us.
Great, great. And I just want to speak to this, and, because I'm, I'm inferring by your comments that you're suggesting more psychologists. And I, I kind of inferred that, but, and before, before you say anything, so one of the things I want to make sure that is, that I have a chance to communicate, I want to return people stipends and differentials. I want to take people, I mean, I want to bring class sizes back down where they were a year ago, want to put people on their proper steps, and I want to return furlough days that were taken away from everybody. And so we want to do all of those, and so I'm saying all of that to say, you know, it's a list, and it's a priority, and the set of priorities first is really trying to make people whole from this tough, tough year that we had. Then we'll get to the, all of the adding and subtracting and other people. So I recognize you, I recognize what you do.
Right, and on top of that, in our department, many of us are twelve-month employees, but a lot of us are eleven months as well.
Right.
I happen to be one of the eleven-month employees. And in terms of professional development.
So I'm, we can talk about this afterwards, I want to get to two people so we can transition.
Okay.
So we'll be here.
Hi, I'm Kevin Burke, I teach here at Northwestern. I was just wondering, like, if you have seen the data and what, what should we do with eighteen-year-olds that, you talk about all those extra projects, and I think they're awesome, I have trouble, like, what do I do with an eighteen-year-old that can't read? And he's got to get a degree. I know they're going to get a degree, they've passed all their other classes, but, I got to teach African-American history, it's elective, so you get to do, like, fun stuff and that, which is cool. But I'm reading an eighth-grade level reading book, and one of the first things I do, this is only my third year, but what I found really, like, telling is I give an eighth-grade reading inventory to all my students, I found it online, and like, half of them are reading at an eighth-grade level or lower. And that's like a lot of kids that are, so I just want to know, what grade are they, like, not learning to read anymore?
So part of what, part of the reason I said this can't be a conversation just about high schools.
Yeah.
Is because we have to have measures at other places in their system that really become an indicator of the student's ability to move on. And we're talking about, we start talking about this conversation at second grade.
Yeah.
And then somehow, something happens between second grade and high school where either it flattens or declines. And so then we have to put in a bunch of intervention programs and other things. But a couple of exciting things are happening right now. One is Universal Design for Learning, UDL. It is a task force now that's commissioned by the state legislature, and it's actually going to look at making modifications for students, even those who are struggle reading the normal way. So that's one. Two is, we put some things in place to help high school students learn to read, we did that several years ago. One was Read 180, I know you have a class here. We have, we also have a class around math that did the same thing. But that's why we talked about this as looking at these indicators long before students hit high school.
Yeah.
Because it has to, it can't stop. It can't start at high school, it has to begin long before that. That's why I want to talk about a profile of a graduate, I'm talking about the year 2017, because there's work to do in order to get up to that. The question really becomes, so what do we do with the young people sitting with us now, and hopefully is using some of the interventions like you described in the Read 180s, and some of the strategies around UDL?
And then just one more quick thing about, like, all of it coming together. Because PG County has, like, a pretty, like, unique population, we're more urban, so it's, you can do a lot more things here, or, we're more on, you can be more on the experimental front, I feel like. Would we ever go to a system that's more based on tracking students on what they're going to do outside of high school?
We will.
Like, kind of like, and I'm talking about, like, what China does basically in Singapore, which is sixteen, if you're not going to go to college, then you know by sixteen, and we're going to prepare for carpentry or for those kind of things. And maybe that's a hard thing for kids to hear, but sometimes it's necessary for them to hear.
Yeah, so.
Because I have kids that are going to be, think are going to be basketball players, and they're not on a team at school, and.
Right. So the answer to your question is no, we will not go to tracking. However, however, we are going to talk about pathways for students. We're going to talk about pathways, but here is the interesting thing, the young man who I talked about with carpentry, the math that he needed was equivalent to the math that a student needs to get into college to do carpentry, he was just applying it in a different way. And so we have to really think about how do we do those and apply those things in different ways to expose kids to different opportunities. So I do see that, one of the things we ask when we talk to all of the students and twenty-eight hundred parents, is what are some of the experiences you would like your child to have? And many said HVAC, carpentry, electrical, cosmetology, but we have sixteen thousand students sitting in those classes right now.
Yeah.
Sixteen thousand. And last year, two hundred of them sat for the assessment at the end of that program. So part of this is really making sure that our students end with something that they can use, and just not allowing students to sit in those classes and spend time, but actually learn and make the expectation that you're going to end with something that you can use. Why not have students who are in cosmetology class sit for the license?
Yeah.
They've been in it two years.
Even if you're not going to use it.
Even if you're not going to use it, right. So that's, but that's approaching it differently. That's, that's, that's training students with a view towards them doing something and becoming something versus, I'm, I'm holding you here because there was no other place for you. So that's, so, to your point, thank you.
My name is Nicole Graham, and I've been teaching in Prince George's County for four years, and I'm still getting paid like a first-year teacher. I'm now in the, in the middle of getting my master's degree, and I'm just wondering if the county is ever going to catch up with the step increases? Am I going to get paid like I have a master's degree, or am I still going to get paid like it's my first year here?
Well, we don't know if, well, first of all, we're going to put you on the right step, so we got to get you there first. So we got to get everybody on the right step first, because I think all of your colleagues sitting in here, it's almost been the same amount of time that they haven't been, seen an increase either. So we need to pay you on the right step first. But we are actually talking about, you know, compensation structures that really incentivize individuals at different places.
Right.
And so we talk about how does that incentivize you as an educator? Now, here's one thing, we heard research earlier, so there's research also that says that there's nothing empirically that suggests that a master's makes any difference toward student achievement. But we have a system that pays for masters. So we have to reconcile that and determine if that's the case in that county.
Right.
And if it is, make adjustments so that we're incentivizing individuals at the right places. Because we also know we have a bi-modal distribution of people, we have a lot of people one to five years, and then a lot of people eligible for retirement. And something happens between that one and five where people choose to do something else. And so that could be a point of, that could be an incentive point right there.
Well, that was my next question, what are you doing to retain the good teachers that are here?
We're begging people to stay. Yeah, no, and so part of that is, that's what, that's one of the reasons we're recrafting. We got a two-million-dollar grant from Gates, we got a sixteen-point-eight-million-dollar grant from Department of Education and a teacher incentive fund, and that's why we're actually constructing what we think is a model that will incentivize individuals to remain after those initial years. And then the other part, oh, sorry, the other part is really, so we want individuals, and so if they reach a certain classification, let's say the classification is distinguished, means that you're the top of the top, then those are the individuals who actually should train, they're the individuals who actually should mentor, they're the individuals who should coach, and they're the individuals who should lead departments and lead PD. And as they do all of those things, we pay them more, which means that then it's a differentiated structure for those individuals who are quote-unquote distinguished, and then everybody works towards some sort of mechanism like that. So that's one example. That's, I'm not saying that's the example we will use, but that's just one example.
So just to clarify what you said, you said before, I can be paid for having a master's degree, I need to be on the correct depth, how long is it going to take the county to catch up with that?
I, you know, and that's, that's the question of the day, we actually, if in fact, this year, we had no money to raise this, as a matter of fact, we had to cut people and furlough people.
Right.
And if next year's going to be worse.
Right.
It, it could be another year or so. I do think we're going to begin working out of this, our enrollment is already starting to increase, state revenue projections are getting better. But generally, schools are the ones hit most severely with these types of cuts.
Right.
And they're the last ones they come out of.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'd like to tell you, within a couple of years, we hope to make you whole, but the, the real answer is, I don't know. I hope it's in a couple of years.
So what is the incentive for young teachers like myself and my colleagues who are going back to school to get more education because you want qualified teachers working here?
We want to get you.
I don't understand what our reason for staying is here. Why can't we go to Montgomery County or another state and get paid like we're, like my master's?
Yeah, I mean, and I can't keep, and I can't keep you from, I can't keep you from doing that. And so part of that is, it does become a competition model, we lost teachers this year, and we lost teachers who did go to other places. I would hope that it's your love for the students you teach that will keep you here until we come out of this cycle and we intend to make people whole, but we can't print money. And so I can't make it to, to give to people, and if I could, I would, I print a lot of it, as a matter of fact, but I, I can't. And so I, I can't keep you as an educator from saying, okay, I'm going to jump ship. I can tell you though, we're working extremely hard, and with the legislature, and with the new county exec, who has actually said, he doesn't want to see people furlough, he doesn't want to see teachers laid off, and he wants to make sure that he provided enough resources for us to, to incentivize individuals at every step. So I can say that, we haven't seen any money yet.
A four-day school week? Four-day school week?
Uh, no, not a four-day school week yet, we may have that coming, yeah.
With money and everything short, it's only four days, what's the surprise? You got to save all the rest?
Yeah, but we have to talk about the opportunity cost for that. And the opportunity cost is, so if we're going four days for ten hours?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how productive that is. I mean, and so, I know some people say yes, no, but we're looking at all of those things as we look at.
I don't think these kinds of help. I don't think these kinds of help.
Yeah, but right now, we also have to meet state standards. So we, we would still have to meet the hour time in four days. So it doesn't, I mean, so we can't go less time, we would have to make up the five-day time in a four-day period. So that, that would present a challenge.
Well, this sort of goes with what you were speaking about, I just had a few questions, and I just wanted to raise four or five things to ask you.
Sure, we have, so we're asking because of the number of people who want to ask questions, that you do one first and then we'll circle back. So if you, I'll tell you what, we'll do two.
All right, one will be very long.
Okay.
Okay, I have a child who's three years old at Robert Gardner Montessori, which is a magnet program in the school, in the county, and there's no busing for them, and I know that, like, children with special needs, half-day programs have busing, and I know that the state and the county is increasing busing, excuse me, pre-K head start programs for three-year-olds. And my colleague, ten feet over from my desk, cannot afford to send her child, I pay three thousand dollars for van transportation for my son to attend because my husband and I can't take him during the day, and there's no bus transportation. And that's point one, is that with all the increase of head start programs and pre-K programs, what's the county going to do, because these are very important programs, and the magnet programs are very important, but at the same point, it's not accessible for all parents. And then my second question is, what is the county doing to you on down to support all the corporate sponsors out there like Target and Giant A+? And why aren't that on each school's website, and why isn't that information in all the newsletters on how we can support our schools without having to sell plastic football cups? And all the other, you know, millions of fundraisers we're asked to do, and we could so easily with shopping do those things? And what's the county doing to support website development for schools and e-communications and e-newsletters with all this all from that kind of?
Yeah, great, thank you. Those are easy questions, I mean, not easy, but I thought you were going to lump them all into one. So the, the first one on the pre-K, now, are you saying that you transport to our pre-K?
Well, I'm not, it's not a pre-K program for me.
Okay.
It's a magnet program, and for, I'm a part of Montessori, so if I have some suicide, we have to find transportation for them.
Okay.
And for the blessing. But the state is, if the county is increasing pre-K head start programs as well as Montessori, and yet unless you're unqualified or unqualified, or you have, you have to send your child, you have nowhere to get there unless you're on the standard, which I've had it for either, but it's important.
Yeah.
So what's the county going to do to lessen the increasing of three-year-old half-day to programs?
So, a pre-K, so we have a Head Start program, and we have a pre-K. These are income eligible pre-Ks, so.
Uh, but I don't, the Montessori program on the star, I think there may be some- That's not, uh, there's no anything qualified, that's a lot of stuff. There's two Montessors in the county that I don't believe are income-based, it's a lot of, and there's no transportation.
Go ahead, you want to respond to that?
Sure. We cannot provide transportation except for income eligible, and, and as you said, students with special needs identified through IP. We would love, we have about 10,000 kids at age three, and we can't afford to buy university pre-K. That's actually-
And that's actually dependent on state funding, but if, we have tremendous calls for expansion of pre-K and Head Start, and, and we simply don't have that, the state simply is not supporting us in that endeavor. So, unless something changes, I don't see us expanding that, particularly in these tight budget years.
So, it's a state funding issue?
State, the state actually gives us per pupil, but not for pre-K.
But, what about Montessori? That's not pre-K. It's, it's just, I'm not, I don't qualify for income.
Right, but, but we can expand that, but we, we don't have money for transportation.
But, that's the county.
We also have Mayor Patrilla Robinson, North Brentwood. Mayor Robinson, thank you for being here. And Mayor Xavier Wright. And various council persons, so I know, I don't, so all of the council persons, thank you so much for coming. Mayor, any questions?
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I attended your town hall meeting at Largo last week, and I asked you a question about the high school boundary changes, and you responded that the boundary changes were about making sure that the students were better distributed around. So, but I'm still concerned about students having access to high-quality programs, such as those that are at the existing science and tech magnet programs. I heard that there wasn't any plan to change the admission criteria to these magnet programs, but there's still a PowerPoint presentation at the PGCEPS website that, that has led to a great deal of confusion about that, and it's, it's still there, and it, it doesn't speak to that issue, which is really important for a lot of people. No, no, this is actually a pretty, well, it's from February of this year, PowerPoint talking about the Phase Three boundary changes.
Right.
And about a lot of the programs that you want to have available in the new clusters and, and among the potential programs, our science and tech programs in the new clusters. And it doesn't, it doesn't say anything one way or the other about the continued access to the three existing programs, and, but we've heard in the last week that there's, there's no plan to change that, that, that even though this area, for instance, will now fall into a different cluster, we wouldn't be able to apply to Eleanor Roosevelt. But, but there's nothing written anywhere.
Yeah, that's not, in, in fact, I'm glad you asked that question, because that's not what the cluster suggests. The clusters are designed to talk about academies, and the academies are really designed and to be open for all students and to distribute options across the county for all students. That's the academy structure. And, but that's not for the science and tech. So, we have three science and tech programs: Roosevelt, Flowers, and Oxon Hill. The design of who attends those programs don't change. So, if you are in an area where you make application to, or test into Roosevelt now, you test into Roosevelt in the future. If you test into Flowers now, you test into Roosevelt in the future.
What is unclear in that PowerPoint is that it didn't, doesn't say that.
No, but that's, that was a planning document. So, we did that, we used that document, and we went out to talk to parents. And part of that was really, where are seats available? That's all of that was designed to do. Where are seats available in order to put academies? But, that's what that was designed to do.
But, it does say in these separate, in the clusters that there might be science and tech programs in the new cluster.
Yeah, one of, yeah.
That's why people are curious.
Right, so you, we, we're going to have a new presentation to the board this Thursday. You're all are welcome to attend. It's at seven o'clock at, in Upper Marlboro, and we're going to be going over our presentation at that time, and I think it will clear up a lot of that. Now, I think the gentleman was, wait, oh, ladies first, yes.
Hi, I'm Mayor Robinson, North Brentwood. I'm concerned, I think you answered the question about Eleanor Roosevelt, because I'm in District Two, and I heard some rumors. You know how rumors fly?
Absolutely.
And I don't like to have rumors flying, and I like to, you know, get it firsthand, but I think you've answered that. What I'm concerned about is a lot of things, like the parent academy, our municipalities, and our groups, our Maryland Black Mayors, Maryland Mayors Association, Prince George's County Municipal Association, we don't get these, we don't get this information. And we need to be put on a mailing list to make sure that we can bring this out to our parents. I think a lot of, of the parents, especially in my area, don't get, they, they work all the time, they don't get all the information. We have newsletters, we have community channels that we could, you know, broadcast and, and make sure that this information is getting out, and that is my main concern as far as getting on a mailing list about that. My second point would be, I'm very concerned, I know we have English for our, our Spanish-speaking, speaking children, but I, I, I'm really, really convinced that in elementary school, that Spanish for our English children would help them. And I think it is a way of communication, and I think we need to have that now. They will grow up, they can teach. I went to a Spanish class, I know Ola, okay? But, I'm saying they could teach the parents. I think this is very, very, they're easy, they're ready to learn, they eager, they can achieve, and the elementary school really needs to have Spanish for our English-speaking, speaking kids.
Yeah, thank you for that, and I couldn't agree more. And Ms. Johnson will hug you for that. But, one of the things that we, one of the things that we just did was we were able to expand into one of the closed schools, the French immersion program. And we're actually going to look at that program as a K-12 program. And it's no reason that it cannot be done in other languages. And so, we, we already have some students in, at one of the elementary schools who are actually learning Chinese. And you're right, it's amazing how young students pick up those languages much easier than, than we do. With respect to the parent academies, and I know Karen is here, and one of the things I want to say about the parent academies is that, that is, the parent academies are, are becoming a function of community organizations that are coming together to open up academies to inform. We're working with them to do that, but I want to stress that most of the energy around that, that's coming from the community. So, they are coming to us to say, "We want to open a parent academy in, right here." And we're, and we'll, and we can help with that, we just can't do it. And so, part of what we're attempting to do, so Karen can give you some information if you're interested in opening that, we would love to open those up across the county.
In opening a parent academy, we would be very glad to work with them in that regard to make it happen. Alrighty.
And we are getting to do this, but this is how it's been done, our ears, to help the school. We need to create a closer relationship so we can all be involved within the program to have our parents involved also. And I know every minute to be, all the mayors here and parents, everybody are willing to come together and do this and, and help the schools to be a better school for us.
And, and various forms of communication are obviously very important. You know that all of our parents can, in fact, sign up and receive the messages that go out routinely from the school system. The superintendent has also started tweeting, so if you're on Twitter, you can tweet with him, and, you know, there are just a variety of things. So, we're open to all possibilities and opportunities. Thank you.
I, I just have to make a comment. There are varieties, however, how is that being communicated to parents who don't understand that or know that, or like ourselves, attend meetings such as these?
Yeah.
So, that, that goes back to the communication question that you asked.
Yeah, great question. And, and we'll answer that after this gentleman asks his question.
No, no, I, I feel free.
You better come and ask your question. So, I think Twitter will become popular when it starts knowing. That everyone will want to know.
One, I'd like to say thank you to you, your staff, the mayors, and unfortunately, I feel ashamed that there's not enough parents here. The other part of it is, I am concerned that maybe I took the wrong meaning to this meeting. I have a concern too. The most pressing is classroom size. I hear it on the news, I'm in my, my son's school and my daughter's school at least twice a week, and they probably don't like me because I'm in the classroom. But, what are we going to do with the size of the class? I got a third grader in a class, he's a, a young male, for an African-American male at this point, that's the pivotal point in any African-American male, and probably any male. What are we doing with that classroom size? The teacher's overwhelmed, and my son, in the first grading period, whom, my wife and I are probably a little biased here, is very bright, but he's being labeled as, "Oh, he's not focused." But, when I go in the classroom, I don't see one kid focused. And I'm asking you directly, sir, what are you going to do? My son's in a trailer, and I feel he's falling behind.
The trailer question is different than the class size question.
Well, not, not really, sir, and I'll tell you why. The trailer cramps them together.
Yeah, well, let me tell you why. Let me tell you why. It, it's different, but it's related. Here's how it's different. The, the trailer speaks to space in the school, it doesn't speak to sizes of class. The, the class size actually speaks to budget. And so, we have, when we've cut, the amount of money that we've cut, and we've tried to protect classrooms, our only place to go, and we furloughed people, we laid people off, but we had to increase class size because it was simply not enough revenue. All right, with that being said, the reason I want to mention, I want to come back to the trailer, because if we reduce class sizes, then we're also talking about more space that's needed in order to do this. I'm not suggesting that as a reason not to, I'm just saying that becomes more students possibly in portables. The other, the final point is this, that we want to reduce class sizes to the extent we can, but for every one student across our system, because of the size of our system, it is a $13 million proposition. And us trying to spend $13 million to reduce class size when you have competing priorities like people being laid off, furloughs, and we're trying to protect classrooms, then it just becomes difficult.
So, let me make sure I understand this, and, and I'm in corporate America, so I understand budget cuts and all that, as many in this room do. At the end of the day, you're saying my son is still lost.
Today, we have to help your son. We have to help your son, but it's not, it's not just class size that helps it.
I guess my question is, not to get around the politics and not to be argumentative, how? Because I don't see it.
So, how becomes, it's a great question. So, how becomes this? We, there are other districts around, and I'll use one that's in Virginia, not too far from us.
I work over there.
Where the, there was talk about eliminating transportation, charging for athletics, increasing class sizes, removing foreign language, and it was all of that talk, and the citizens in that system said absolutely not. Absolutely not. And they went to the legislature, and they made a difference, and they changed revenue. And I, I'm only saying that because when we get to the budget cycle, it's really important that we carry this message together, just as we talked about, we can't, all of us have to educate students together, we all have to talk about this dynamic together. This is a revenue issue. And if, in fact, we get 60% of our funds from the state, actually, we get 70% of our funds from the state, we get 30% of our funds locally, and if our county and the state are suffering, then they pass that on to school systems. And that's, so that's what we're dealing with. So, the session starts, Madam Chair, in January, session starts in January, and we're going to make sure we get a lot of information out for anyone who's interested in, in helping us with this issue.
And then, to add to this, there's-
Yes, ma'am. I was going to say that, if your child, even third grade, you have one in first grade, you actually need answers now. And I, I, and I'm, I'm just going to suggest that this is another opportunity for our communities and our mayors, maybe putting some new citizens in the classroom, people who have time and want to give back with minimal direction while we're bringing the rest, math, there's some very simple things we could do that maybe your child isn't for. If they're looking for, what are they going to do? And I, I think we have to look at more immediate solutions to try to help put a Band-Aid on and build community to help us fight for more dollars. And I think, because I really feel for that situation, your children are, they're not an experiment.
Well, luckily, you know, we are a two-family house, so, and I got to give my wife a lot of credit, but I've watched my daughter, who came out of this to Pickle School, excel, and I'm watching my son now suffer, and I, I truly believe it goes back to the side. And finally, and then I'm going to sit down, my wife hit me with this one. My daughter likes to participate in after-school programs and such, and she's in the IB program, and on occasion, they ask her to stay after school. We want her to do that, and it's almost, she's penalized, but what are we doing about getting her home after school hours? Is there anything, I know, budget? But, what are we doing about getting them home afterwards? Because a lot of these parents, myself, we don't get off to six or seven o'clock. So, can we get some, some relief somehow?
So, part of what I'm trying to do with the, with the county is look at how we can integrate the services of park and planning and school system, if in fact, they are also transporting some of the students. And how do we integrate those services? We're also talking to the libraries, we are trying to establish a, a program with the libraries, park and planning, and the school system so that we can attack this program, I mean, this issue together.
I'll make sure I put my voice in there, I'll get you some help.
Yes, sir, and then Mr. Ar, Dr. Arbogast is actually working, helping us work through that.
Good evening, my name is Robert Chester. No, actually, it's Jacques Chevalier. And I just want to say, I think the cluster program, the initiatives that you're putting forth is a great thing for the county, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to that, Dr. Height. I have two quick comments that I'd, I'd like to make. We talk about, you know, clusters and, and keeping our children safe and protected. One of the things that I'd like to see happen here, and I think we ought to, it, it probably doesn't take any amount of money in the budget whatsoever, and follow the lead of what a lot of our amusement parks and other places are doing now, and stop this cigarette smoking allowed on our school grounds. We know it's dangerous, we know it means no good, and I know that there are some people in here smoke, there's people on the school board that smoke, and it's ridiculous, and it's insane, and it's, it's, it's sickening that we have to go in to get through school buildings, you got janitors, you got teachers, you have students in some cases, you have visitors, parents, everybody, that, you know, you had to, you know, fight through cigarette smoke. I get so offended when I got to go to the county executive building, and I got to go downtown to places in DC, and people are smoking right near the entrances. And I think that we ought to, you know, take the lead in that regard as well, with that subject, and say, "You know what? We care more about our students than we care more about trying to satisfy a couple different school board members just to satisfy their egos." If we really care about kids, that's something we'll stop, as opposed to, people are going to resist me for this, but I'm going to say it. We're more concerned about teaching illegal immigrants who come across this country and costing us money. I realize that you, you're breathing, but you know, you let this guy go on for four or five minutes, and I'm almost done here. And I say, if we can do that, then we ought to find a way that we can just have one section possibly way out in the corner, nowhere near the building entrances whatsoever, and let people, if they, they want to kill themselves and smoke, that's fine, but don't have it where, anywhere on the sidewalks or the pathways where our children and parents are dropping off kids and coming out. And I just think that's something that needs to be addressed, sir, and we can really have a wholesome school district for our kids. Thank you. And you don't have nothing to say about that?
You said it all.
I'm Chris Mendoza. I'm here as a councilman from Blainsburg, but also as a parent of a high school student. Uh, Dr. Height, one of the concerns we have in Blainsburg is that our, our police department spends more time at the high school than they do the normal job, you know, in the town. So, that's a burden on us, you know, as a town. And we asked the, the principal for the last two years to give us a list of the student work programs, just the names, so if we see somebody, we could pick them up and bring them back to school, but they refused to give us that. And they also have refused to give it to Park and, Park Police, which is, it's adjacent to a park. And I know because I heard them in front of me, the Park Police have asked the, the administration. So, that's one thing. Another is, as a high school, students don't have ID?
They do.
Because my son was, he just transferred a few weeks ago, but the school says they don't have ID right now. So, it's hard to tell, you know, who goes to that school or not.
So, we'll get staff to get that information. Dr. Coleman Potter, the schools do have IDs. So, if they don't have the IDs out, or they, or they need help purchasing new IDs, we have to talk about that, but they, they should have IDs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I have a question in reference to, um, transportation. My sister-in-law lives in Landover Hills area, and she is in a neighborhood where, um, it's a walking school. The elementary school is a walking school, but she is physically disabled. And so she is unable to walk her daughter to school. And so as a result, um, right now, she's in a situation where her, my niece was forced to be homeschooled because transportation department told her that, you know, unfortunately, you're the one that's disabled, so we don't provide transportation for the child. So she was unable to get busing. And so there's no way for her to get her child to a public school. And I just don't understand what, what the county, you know, why the county wouldn't assist in a situation like that. What is, what kind of help can be offered so that the child, my niece, isn't forced to be homeschooled?
Yeah, so what grade is your niece in?
First grade.
First grade. So Dr. Potter is, she's talking to that gentleman right now. She is, she can work with you through your transportation, uh, issue. Generally, what we do is we send staff to actually walk the route with the child and determine if in fact, it is warranted that we have transportation. We have a safety officer who does that. And I think that would at least be a good next step for you, uh, for your niece, um, so that we could at least make sure that if there's a requirement for the child to walk, that it's a safe route to school.
Okay, 'cause we've called the board numerous, and no one, that everyone just says, well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Dr. Potter.
With the green jacket?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Height. Um, what is the final decision for the future of gifted students in the arts in our county? Will there ever be a dedicated high school for these children, or will there always be small programs like at Sutland High School?
Dr. Arbogas talked about that at the last board meeting.
At this point, there's no plan for a gifted and talented high school, magnet high school. That, right now, we have programs, like you mentioned, the, uh, creative and performing arts at Sutland, and the science and tech programs at the three high schools which are tested in. We also have IB at five of our high schools, um, and we're expanding APs. So we feel like our comprehensive high schools actually have quite a few opportunities for gifted and talented students.
I'm just focused strictly on the, the arts. Anything, just for the arts?
That's another question. Sutland is an extraordinarily expensive program for us to offer. Extraordinarily expensive. The superintendent, in my understanding, would very much like to see the expansion of the visual performing arts. And if not, you know, remember they talked about clusters, five clusters? It's so expensive that in that program, we would probably look at a southern, which would be Sutland, and a northern. And we haven't quite determined what, um, that site might be. Although many people have mentioned this particular school because, because they have the Jim Henson, um, Center. But I can tell you that we are not going into the budget cycle right now with a proposal for FY-12 for visual and performing arts in, in the northern part of the county. It's, it's, it's not.
Why not just create one centralized performing arts school in the county?
You mean like at Central High School, Largo, kinda thing?
There's something so that parents from both the southern end and the northern end could send their children.
That's, that's.
So all that pool of money is going to one location.
Um, you know, we, there's a pretty big capital investment to a creative and performing arts. So if we were gonna go to a central, a central location, then we'd have to put that into our, into the CIP budget. So it's, um, I was kinda shocked when I heard how much money it costs to retool Sutland for this program, so.
What's the number for the program for performing arts?
I don't know. No, I, I, I wouldn't even begin to guesstimate the capital. But I will tell you that creative and performing arts, not only is there a capital improvement budget, but there's also, um, staffing. Creative and performing arts actually gets additional, what we call FTEs, teaching positions, so that they can offer a variety of courses. We also have creative and performing arts middle schools, uh, Benjamin Floy and, uh, Thomas Pullen and.
I'm just confused by that. It's like you say, three middle schools, like one art, it's only one performing arts, one high school.
And no, not, not actually one high school, just one program.
And, and because myself, I, I know myself as a parent of a gift in the arts, we're thinking about, we're thinking about moving to DC. Right, this is.
To D.C.
That's ridiculous. Because the little Maryland, we're paying the adults in eleven thousand, twelve thousand dollars a week. I mean, and it's three performing arts middle schools, only one. I mean, something just doesn't add up.
And we're losing a lot of our talent, as we know.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't understand why we can't get another performing arts high school. That, this, this doesn't make any sense to me. I, I hear what you're saying, I hear the numbers, I hear the statistics, but realistically, all the parents there, it doesn't matter. Like, something should be done. I, I completely understand that nothing can help. You've got three middle schools, one high school, one, I don't know.
Your fault, man, your fault.
Yeah. Yeah, and you see, yeah, I'm just a little confused. We all know that we are, there's something that definitely needs more education, it brings kids more together. Definitely something, and as a parent, we're kind of not there, it's all, yeah.
But, but it is, it is, it is a capital issue. And that would mean that it's a major, um, fiscal note in order to do that. And it would take some planning, that's all. I think it's a good idea. We've actually talked about, uh, opening a second, but it is, the, the fiscal note in order to do that in these times, it just makes it difficult. That's all. Um, we, we want to expand choice options, we just are not able to expand that one yet. Well, we have, what we're gonna present on Thursday is a, um, how we will roll out the, how we will roll out the plan long-term. And it will fall in like series of years. And I don't know where that recommendation fits in, in the series.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, good evening, how are you? Good evening, parent. I do know that you're in a position to answer our questions. Some of them you can answer, some of them you have to defer to your staff. So we recognize that, but I do wanna follow up on a couple of them. I'm gonna try and be quick. One, I do think that there is an opportunity to equal out the ratio of what she's referencing in terms of performing arts and visual arts. And I think that there is a time period of strategic planning for that. However, I look at your profile of the new high school graduate. And so within that profile, you talked about effective staffing, security, uh, giving opportunities and options. So I'm hoping that.
Knowledge and skills.
A lot of details that, you know, this is the basic high level fifty thousand feet.
Right.
However, I do wanna ask you a question regarding, what do we do as parents who are here? Currently, this group looks like a committed group. For 2017, and we've got a first grader, third grader, a kindergartner, what do we do until 2017? Because that's a long way off. And if we want to remain in the county and be a viable educational source for our children, as she's indicated here, how do you plan to move that strategic plan forward in a more of a, uh, broken down, I'll call it chunks? So that you can get to 2017 a little bit faster?
Right, that's actually what we're gonna talk about at the board meeting on Thursday. And that, I mean, it's not public yet, so I'm not releasing a lot of the information. But what else we're doing? We're exposing more students to advanced placement right now. We're, we're having more students, we're opening a middle college, we're also attempting to do that. And we're opening more program options that expand some of the successful options. Right now, it's just at the middle school.
Okay.
At the middle school in order to do that. So that's what we're attempting to do, but we knew that we could not do that piecemeal. We had to have some sort of long-term plan and strategy in order to consider everything in the county. And that's why the 2017, um, was a date that we used. Here's the other, the last part that I wanna submit.
Alright.
And that is, we also know that in order for students to access a STEM program in high school, some change, some things have to change at elementary. College Board is a part of our race to the top application. And College Board is actually gonna come in and audit our curriculum, our professional development, and our instructional practices, not just at high school, but at middle and elementary, so that we're ensuring that this whole notion about preparing kids to do some of the things I described up there, it's actually beginning at a fundamental level at the elementary schools.
And that's great. My background's organizational development, so I understand about having strategic planning. But there's also flexible strategic planning that is caught up, you know, it's basically focused in on what we can do in the here and now. I think the College Board coming in is a great idea, but that audit could take another whole year, as you know audits do, in terms of getting the data.
It's not particularly.
Well, we're hoping not.
Right.
We'll hold you to it. So I'm really thinking that if your staff here is taking notes, there needs to be something that puts in place some of the things we're asking about before 2017. Specifically, yes, expanding the STEM program, arts, performing, visual, uh, the IB program, Project Lead the Way, which no one knows about, which is very successful, and I've had successful students come through these programs, and I'm very happy with them. But I want more people to know about it, and I wanted to know that there are other opportunities beyond just going to Sutland or just going to Roosevelt.
But those programs are, and we have those programs now.
But you don't have them everywhere.
No, we don't have them everywhere.
And that's what you're talking about.
But that's part of the expansion.
With the cluster.
No question about it.
Although the performing arts in our northern area doesn't seem to be one of those pieces in that.
And that's because of the fiscal note, as I talked about earlier. That's, I mean, that's because it's a much larger thing. Look, we would love to have options available for everything, but we have to consider the revenue picture and that.
And I understand that.
In which we live right now.
Within that revenue picture, can you figure out some short strategic things to implement smaller pieces? You say piecemeal doesn't work, but piecemeal does work.
That's what.
If it's thought through for a period of time, for just a segment, even a demonstration project, to prove that it's effective.
So, when you see the presentation on Thursday.
I'm coming.
Hopefully you, we'll there.
I'm coming.
When you see the presentation, you will see that eleven twelve is a year when some programs begin.
Okay.
Twelve thirteen.
Okay.
Thirteen fourteen.
Alright.
Fourteen fifteen.
We're gonna be looking.
And you will see that we've chunked it out in a way that talks about all schools and all clusters.
Okay, I appreciate that from one hand to another.
And twenty seventeen is actually sooner than the first grader will graduate.
It is, but it's not necessarily sooner for those of us who have middle school students.
I understand.
So that's why I asked the question. And we do understand your position, but I just wanna make sure that your staff is getting this down, that there is a critical piece around 2017 that needs to happen before then. My second question relates to the first woman, and I know you said two questions. Communication, still haven't quite gotten an answer. I heard about tweeting, I'm still not clear on how we're communicating with our parents who necessarily do not have computer access and/or get the voicemail messages that you send. And how do we communicate with them better? And I'll leave you to give us an answer, or have your communications person respond.
Yeah, no, um, and, and Mr. Presley is here. And one of the things we have to do for communications is get better. And we have to get better at communicating in a way that all people have access to that information. And so part of what we're doing, we're using various forms of communication right now. We are using the web, we are using some technological resources, we're also using a call-out system. And we're doing some things the old-fashioned way, and that's sending out information to parents. But we're also working with Verizon to put, um, kiosks into shopping centers and grocery stores and other commonplaces so that it has information about our system on it. And Verizon is actually talking about, this is one of our business partnerships, they're actually talking about donating these kiosks for us to use for the purpose of communicating in common spaces. So that it's just not to parents, but it's to community at large. So if we need individuals who are retired, who wanna come work in our schools, we can put it as a part of that, that informational center. So thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Dr. Height.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming on tonight. I just wanna say, uh, first of all, we thank you for the work that you've done over at Cherokee Lane when our, uh, children were in the outside of Portables. You worked with us down the half of the way back to get them out of the Portables into the buildings. And to the father, I know it's possible, and I know that you're a man of your word, working towards that. And that being said, I wanna go to the, uh, the parent academies. Uh, my question is, the STEM dollars, they have a budget of approximately eighty million dollars in STEM budget there, um, not reviewable for STEM. Is there possibly a way with the parent academies to attach the after-school programming to those parent academies? I know with the Maryland Black, Black Mary's Association, uh, we had reading programs over the summer. Um, and they're looking to extend that throughout the school year, uh, in, in their municipalities. So is there possibly a way to work with them in a partnership with the parent academies and STEM dollars to make something like that work? Because many of our parents, as they're saying they're working, uh, five, six, seven o'clock at night, with nothing for their children to do. And those bright children become very bored, and then they become, uh, not a behavioral problem, but a issue in the classroom at times. We're gonna divert that to.
Ms. Lynch, she's actually working on this issue right now.
Right.
And, did you hear the question? I, I think you did, okay. The, the question was, um, how do we divert or use some of the resources, um, to help or to assist the parent academies, particularly with after-school, uh, types of activities and strategies? You need a mic?
The parent academies, I think, are a great opportunity to make each academy unique to the community in which it serves. And so, um, it, it's also a great opportunity for members of the community, businesses, community groups, churches, um, parents to come out and lend resources to maximize the opportunities that are available within that particular parent academy. So, um, we've also reached out to county organizations, we've reached out for grants, we've reached out for park and planning's involvement, and everyone has been receptive in the various communities we've gone to thus far.
So with those collaborative partnerships, what I'm asking, once again, STEM dollars, and our mayors are here, and they're looking for some of those things to be brought, their municipalities, there's after-school programs for that case program, and also with that case six. So we're trying to figure out some sort of partnership with the school administration where they can offer that to their parents, because these parents are screaming out for those things to take place. So when you're setting up these parent academies, can you be more specific of how you come in and work to set up those parent academies? We're not really here on that.
Okay, well, um, I certainly wouldn't negotiate the terms of a particular.
How do you set up?
But literally, what we do is we go into a community, or a community approaches us and says, this is the type of service we'd like to have in our community. Um, it's preferable if they have space, um, if they have, um, an interest in after-school tutorials, if they're interested in meeting several times a month. A few components that we'd really like to see are parent education, so that we can get parents involved with the school system, um, knowing what it is and how it is, so they can best improve the educational experience of their child. But beyond that, we're open. If there are dollars that are available, all the better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for hosting this tonight, Dr. Height.
Absolutely.
I, I, first of all, I wanna say I'm a huge advocate of the arts, and I think if you can get it into every classroom, to every child, they would all really benefit. I've seen it firsthand, it's beautiful. But that's, that's not why I'm here tonight, as much as I love the arts. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a very big advocate of the local public schools and trying to make those better because I think they reach the broadest spectrum of kids. I'm a former PTA president and a very active parent in my community. I think every child has a tremendous potential. Um, my children, I have two third graders, and I know we correspond by letter. I have thirty-three and thirty-one children in their classrooms this year, and it's been very stressful for them and, and for our family. And I can imagine, I consider my children to have, you know, a lot of resources in their tool belt, you know, and because of what we're able to provide them. But, you know, it's, it's very hard for them, and I'm really concerned with how it is for the other children. And it's making us have to make decisions on whether to stay or whether to leave, which makes me more concerned for the other children. I understand there were budget issues. I, I still see some classrooms that have lower numbers and some that have disproportionately high. So even though you may have a budget per child, it's not being fairly distributed by the school. I, I understand this isn't easy for anybody. Um, but I do feel that there could be a little more done. I mean, my biggest concern is my children aren't enjoying school, as much as I would love them to maybe have, you know, of course, I want them to learn, and I want them to think critically and creatively and be problem solvers. But first and foremost, I want them to enjoy learning, I want them to enjoy going to school. It's not fun when you have to really push them out the door in the morning, both of them, when they loved it, you know, when it wasn't like this. Um, and I, I feel like, and maybe we could talk about this at some other point. There could have, there could be things done to preempt some of the circumstances that arise when you have really over-proud of classrooms, which I wish we didn't have, and of course, it'd be great to not have those, but to make sure things didn't happen when the teachers are overstressed or overburdened and, um, you know, so the kids have more positive reinforcement. I mean, it's just little things even sometimes. I mean, I'm hu- huge, not a fan of junk food, but if they just gave them M&amp;M's once in a while, even that makes them come home happy once. And I'm not saying that's the last thing I would, wanna advocate, but that's where we are. I want my kids to enjoy school. Um, third graders, especially in third grade, maybe sixth grade, especially when you have, you know, the right other things lined up, which sometimes, you know, certain things can compensate. But third grade is a very transitional year. They don't have the in-school chorus, in-school instruments, they're not, they're now starting testing, they're moving up to upper school curriculum. They have less recess. When there's discipline problems, they lose recess. When you have a class that crowded, and they don't go outside for, you know, sometimes it's a week in a row, they, you know. It, it's, it's really hard. It's, um, I don't, you know, I'd love to talk to whoever more about it, and I'm gonna meet with our principal next week, but it's, it's been distracting.
I know we corresponded.
Yes, thank you for remembering.
Yes, and, and you, you mentioned a dynamic that is, um, problematic for us. And the problem is. And the problem is that, unfortunately, when we talk about the staffing formulas, it's on average.
Mm-hmm.
And it is on average, and if you have smaller classes in another part of the school and then a larger class, and it's only one class, or in some cases, two classes at that grade level, it does create this dynamic. And the average is across all grades, second through fifth, because it's, we don't include kindergarten or first grade.
Oh, yeah.
Because we protected those. But it's a, we balanced some of the classrooms before, we balanced those, and we're attempting to look at those across the county, just to make sure that we're still trying to meet the needs of all of the students in those classes. Dr. Aubregas is the person who's actually working with us to balance, he's right back there.
The church, Rosie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, but I want to say this, and I want all the other parents to hear this, we're gonna stop this stuff about you misbehave and you lose recess. That's a problem. I mean, and we're gonna stop that, and I'm glad you shared that, because we've, that was a point of emphasis for us, as well as silent lunch and some other things, but that was a point of emphasis for us, and so, we will, we're gonna stop that as well. So, that's not the type of discipline that we should be doing, particularly at the elementary level.
That's great.
Where we have, you know, young kids who need that activity.
Well, like I said, I did, I have, I don't want to get into them all here, but I came up with a lot of ideas, I thought, even though they aren't necessarily depend on budget, that I thought could alleviate some of the stresses, and I'm gonna meet with the principal next week, but I would, I think it could help any school that's going through this, if you would.
Sure.
Show me who I could talk to at some point.
Sure. Well, you can start with Dr. Aubregas, and then I think one of the, what the parents said back here in terms of getting volunteers into the school who are interested in working at the school.
It's a great idea, and volunteers have made a huge difference in our school, but it's also when a teacher is overwhelmed, it's very difficult. And I also have to say, the other thing is, the situation is, you have parents that are very active, like me, that are unfortunately thinking, "How much more can we take? Or should we just homeschool? Or should we just," you know, and I hate to do that. I love every single one of those kids in their class, but I have my kids at some, you know?
I love.
But, you know, it's, so, yeah, there's, you know, I mean, I've raised a lot of arts money for the school, there is money out there, maybe not, you know, coming from the state, that we can get programs into these higher, you know, make more priority within the schools to give these things, but anyway.
Thank you. Thanks. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Candace Hollingsworth, and it's a raise this one time. Candace Hollingsworth, I'm a parent of a student, a kindergartner at High School Elementary, and also representative of the PTA. Our school has done tremendously well, I think, given the lack of resources that we, that all schools face, I believe, and I think one of the greatest assets has been that we have a very active parent community, not only in terms of volunteers, but also in people who are willing to pick up the phone and make phone calls. But, given those phone calls that they make, they, parents feel like they're giving the runaround, you know? They don't necessarily know who to contact, then when they contact the person that they're told to contact, they don't get a response. And there are several issues at our school that no amount of parent involvement at this point has seemed to remedy. One is that there is, we have a significant Latino student population, and there's a parent liaison who has been there for several years now, who the parents have come to rely on, and the future of her position seems to be at stake. And her position is not only crucial so that parents can communicate with the teachers in the school effectively, but it also affects the number of parents that we have engaged with the PTA, which translates to other involvement as well. The second issue is that, on the whole, there aren't many Spanish-speaking or bilingual teachers in the classroom. This year, we've been fortunate enough to have a kindergarten teacher, Ms. Rosa, who is fluent in Spanish and English, of course, but I notice that her classroom is disproportionately large number of Latino students. And so, I wonder about the, you know, the social development that happens in that classroom, where you're basically putting a group of students in one class. And so, and it becomes taxing on her, it's a burden she's seen as the Spanish-speaking, you know, teacher in the school. So, that's additional burdens on her. The third issue is that, sorry, this is the last one, really quickly. Number two? I understand. It's just that we have, in Prince George's County, a huge asset in the University of Maryland, and there are student teachers and interns who have to do part, you know, their requirement as part of getting their certificate. And we have been contacting that school to get someone there. Is there a way that your office can find or make a requirement that schools within this county, certifying schools within this county, have to place at least a proportion of their students within Prince George's County schools, to at least help out with the huge number of students in classrooms?
Yeah, I'll start with the last question first. The University of Maryland already places a good number of their students in Prince George's County. They don't replace the majority, but they have, we have what's called professional development schools, and they do place individuals in their schools. They have individuals who are working in the law enforcement field, who are also serving as part of the task force, the gang task force. So, you have individuals who are serving there, so they are actually trying to place a lot of their students in the schools. To your earlier point, it is, we struggle, as a matter of fact, we've partnered with the University of Maryland to develop a program that teaches bilingual students to become teachers in a district of math and science. And they have a full-fledged program that does that, and they're recruiting the students out of our school system. And part of that is the development of this notion of bilingual, and we have gone all over the country to recruit individuals who are bilingual. And some schools have been more successful than others at attracting them, but we continue to work that, understanding that it is a dynamic that we have to address. And your principal has really stated that to me, that she's looking for more and more individuals who are bilingual in nature.
What about the parent liaison positions? Are there, is that in general a function of budget, or is that something else?
That is a function of budget, but I thought that, and I don't know if Hyattsville's a Title I school or not.
Yes.
It is a Title I school, and so, the principal actually has discretion to use monies to continue the parent liaison.
Okay.
Yeah. They have one. Okay, they do have one.
We have one, it's just the parents, every year feels like her position is not going to be available.
No, that was a reduced part of it, to meet the needs of those particular schools.
Okay.
So, they have one, there's no plans to do that.
Okay.
Because that's supported in a different part of money, it's Title I.
So, it's really something that we should be communicating with the principal about?
The principal knows that.
No, she knows, but some, there's some gap in communications, both with our efforts to get some things.
If you talk to Ms. Williams, she is the person who makes that communication.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Height.
Good evening.
I am Mayor Xavier Montgomery Wright. I am here from the town of Brentwood, and my schools are Thomas Stown, Hyattsville Middle, and Northwestern High School. I'm gonna not be before you very long, I have two things that I would like to say. First off-hand to people who don't know about the Gateway Arts District that shuttles down Route 1 corridor, I would invite you all to find out about it. Encompasses four municipalities, Hyattsville, North Brentwood, Brentwood, and Mount Rainier, and we focus on creative and performing arts. And I will tell you, it is supposed to be the hub of Prince George's County, where it focuses on Gateway and it focuses on arts. We need a little bit more help in that area, so I invite people to take a look and come out. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, there is a huge problem that, amongst everything else you all have to do in a school system, and that is bullying. And I just am here to really make a plea, to let people understand, it's not just the elementary school, that it continues beyond elementary to middle and high school and even on to college. But the reason why I wanted to come up here is because there has to be some sort of program that maybe the school system can work with programs, maybe like Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts, that will take you all the way through and transcend. Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts do not stop at eighth grade, you know, they work with teenagers and, you know, how to get that out. We're losing our kids, not just to them having the, you know, inopportune, you know, education tool, but also to not having effectiveness to be able to communicate or understand on being bullied or talk, and they're really scared. Then the other part is, please, do not forget the inner beltway. You have a lot of schools in the inner beltway that are 75% walking, 75% walking. We like to be included in the Safe Routes to School Grants and not hear about it at the last minute. You have leaders, you have mayors in the community. Find a way to connect with the Prince George's County Municipal Association, Maryland Black Mayors, the Maryland Mayors Association. We are the leaders, guess what? They are coming to us, they're knocking on our town hall doors, and they are asking, "How come we don't know?" I will tell you, just even about this meeting, in the email, I had to call Mayor Robinson earlier today, because last week I received an email saying that it was scheduled, and then a day later, it said that it got canceled, but you didn't hear anything else after that. And, one last thing is, but it was for, it was stationed, it had for Northwestern High School, and then they changed it. I'm sorry, one, 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 one last thing.
I gotta cut you off, I'm sorry.
I just.
And I want Karen to answer the bullying question, because I think it's important.
Can you just work on translating some of the bilingual stuff that, some of the information you put on, because it's majority English.
Yes, we can. Actually, we're working on that. We're actually working on that. And we have translators here tonight, too, by the way. I think everyone wanted to hear the question about bullying, though. The bullying.
Regarding the bullying, this is an extremely important issue, and we take it very, very seriously. Our Board of Education and several of our board members are here tonight. Last year, they adopted a no-tolerance policy. The state of Maryland is also extremely concerned about bullying, and there's an increasing awareness within our schools identifying bullies, providing services for victims that have been bullied, also identifying services for bullies to make them stop and to ensure that they stop. We have increased our awareness, we have, in the last year, probably increased the numbers of incidents that we are investigating and where discipline has been administered and where alternatives have been identified by probably about 1,000, 1,000. We've gone from probably recognizing less than 100 to recognizing close to over 600 cases, because it's the result of identification, recognition, training, teaching everyone in our workplace what it is, identifying it, how to stop it. It's something that we are very, very strongly pursuing. Our training is constant. We've provided training in our special ed programs, we've provided training, each of our guidance counselors has received train-the-trainer training in elementary, middle, as well as high, and it's not gonna stop there. It's definitely not gonna stop there.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Kewitz, and I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. I have two questions, one's short and one's a little bit longer. The short question is, we've heard a lot about the county increasing the opportunities for immersion programs, and my question concerns the current Spanish immersion program that's in existence and has been in existence for 10 years. It has not been open up to the county as a whole, and it's at 60% capacity. So, they have class sizes there of about 11, 12 students per class. I'm wondering why that hasn't been made open to the rest of the county? And then the second question has to do, not with class sizes, but with the overall size of the school.
Caesar Chavez?
Caesar Chavez. Okay. Whenever, for the overall size of the school, whenever the county builds a new school, they're often building 800, 900 student elementary schools. And I'm concerned about the inherent inequality of the large schools versus the small schools. When elementary schools are 300, 400, 500 students, the principal knows everybody's name, the counselor knows everybody's name, and those schools are more easily run as a family. When you have 800 students in there, it's really hard to make sure that those students get the services that they need. I've talked to friends of mine who are teachers, and they say that there's generally an exodus of teachers, of good teachers, from the large schools into the smaller schools, partly because those schools are run more as a family, but also because those schools have an easier time meeting AYP. So, I'm wondering what the county is doing to try to balance out some of the inherent inequality of the large schools versus the small schools?
Most of the new school construction is really to meet the needs, the population needs, inside of a size, inside of size parameters for the school, but most are for the number of seats that are needed in that area. So, we don't build 2,000-seat elementary schools, but we will build a larger elementary school if there is a need for, let's say, 800 seats or 600 seats, and we build that a little larger.
And I'm just wondering about the wisdom of building an 800-seat elementary school, just in terms of managing.
That's on the outside of where we would like to build those schools moving forward. We've opened two in the last several years, Vansville and Barack Obama.
And Barack Obama's at 750, correct?
Right, Barack Obama's at 750.
Was Park City at 820 at this point?
I don't know what Rosa Parks is at, but I think, I think that Vansville is under 700.
What about the first question?
I don't remember what the first question was.
Opening up the Spanish immersion program to the county as a whole?
Yeah, Ms. Williams, we're gonna take that back and look at that. Part of that is the issue of space at Caesar Chavez.
The class sizes are 11.
Yeah, well, I've been at this school, and I don't know, I didn't see many classes with 11 kids in it.
I taught there for five years.
Okay, so, maybe it was that way when you taught, but I was there this year.
It still is, yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Dr. Height, Bill Gardner, Mayor of the City of Hyattsville, thank you for the presentation tonight, and thank you, board members, for your work. A quick question on the second goal of effective teaching, and first of all, I appreciate the vision that you've set forward, but could you speak a little bit about how the plan will achieve attraction, development, and retention of highly effective teachers? Couple of the programs that were noted seem to be programs that have a track record of high turnover of teachers. You know, smart people come in, they teach for a few years, they go elsewhere, and that seems to be a problem that we face, and it hurts our system a lot. Thank you.
It's just not the people from those programs, it's everyone who comes in. And what we're finding is, we have a bimodal distribution of teachers, so we have, we have a lot of teachers clustered between one and five years, and then a lot of teachers cluster at the top end of the scale, and not as many there in the middle. So, one of the things that we're doing with our teacher effectiveness work, and this is some of the work that we're doing in conjunction with GATES, we're looking at several streams. Number one is to make sure we recruit and then induct and build the capacity of new teachers. We make sure that we continue to develop those individuals and tie their, and have ways or mechanisms to tie performance to student achievement, that's one indicator, not the indicator, and then have ways to compensate those individuals at different levels, to incentivize them to either stay or move into a different role in coaching, mentoring, leading a department, and we think that that type of structure could provide some opportunities for teachers to move into leadership roles and remain in the classroom, and remain in a posture to help other teachers. And so, part of this is really trying to help our teachers stay with us, but also take advantage of those individuals who are quote-unquote distinguished, and allow those individuals to be the leaders of other teachers.
Hi, good evening, Dr. Height. Ellen O'Neil, I have a son at Hyattsville Middle School, and just want to put a good plug in for the anti-bullying work that they're doing there, it's excellent. My question, however, relates to College Board, and I do see that you're on a forum this week at their national conference. I'm wondering, I did hear about the diagnostic that College Board has offered for Prince George's County. One thing I'm wondering about that is, are they charging a fee or are they doing this pro bono?
They don't do anything pro bono. And so, part of this is, actually, we put in a grant, it was an innovation and innovation, invention and innovation grant, it was an I-3 grant out of DOE, and so, we wrote a grant to actually work with College Board to do the audit, the assessment, implement their accelerator program. Now, we're looking at it as a function of race to the top, and so, that we want to use College Board to help us expand rigor through our curriculum, through our assessments, and through our instruction and professional development. So, that's how we're using them, but they're not doing it pro bono.
No, and I think that's the important point, that College Board is not doing it pro bono, so when they look at increasing AP participation in schools, it'd be useful, I think, for all of us to scrutinize if that's in fact a really good thing. And the dialogue you should have is, where this is happening in other places, the feedback has not been so great. In other words, if the AP is actually watered down, the number of students who are scoring the requisite fours and fives are not happening, and there again, you have to look at what the bottom line interest is of College Board, also vis-à-vis their interest in competing interest in competing against ACT and getting the ear of the State Department of Education. So I think this is an area where parents do need to, you know, on the surface, it sounds great if PG students are all, more and more taking AP classes, but what really is the quality of education there? So I'm just a little suspect when College Board comes in and offers to do the diagnostic.
Yeah, and, and the colleges and many of the admissions offices will say that even in experience where a child has not scored a three, four, or five is better than the fundamental curriculum. And so that the access to that curriculum. But here are two things that we've found. And we found that both for our black males and our Latino students, that we not only increased participation, but we have increased students scoring a three, four, or five, so that access is improving, you know, students' success in, in those areas. Um, the final part of that is that we're also looking to expand our ACT courses as well.
But I think, and I'll wrap this up, it'd be useful at some point to really get some numbers on that. I mean, you're talking anecdotally, that's good. Likewise, when you're talking about.
I'm not talking about the performance anecdotally. That's.
Well, I mean, so, so overall percentage, if you're saying that you're gonna have this many AP plus.
We have more students participate and more students score three, four, or five. African-American males and Latino males.
Okay. So what, when you're offering that, what isn't being offered? The, the other thing, too, is that students are being pushed into AP. Some of them are not able to do it. And the, and the standards, the standardized testing is being pushed down. So that in sixth grade now, some students are taking algebra when they haven't even had numeracy fundamentals, because the earlier education isn't good. So again, I think you have to look at the overall thing, and not just those outcomes that you want to talk about. Finally, numbers are important. And when we're talking about, um, for example, the University of Maryland student teachers being placed, I, you know, I know somebody who represents the special ed department, and she's made a statement to me that said she prefers to place her students in Howard County because it's a better teaching experience for them. So let's get numbers. I mean, let's get numbers about where the placements are. And yes, maybe some of them are coming to Prince George's County. How many? And what's the distribution across the state? Because that's disturbing.
Yeah, it is disturbing. And not that, um, that is disturbing. And it's disturbing that there's a person in a leadership position that is directing students that way. But we also have individuals who are there, who are former educators from their county, who are also directing students to us. So last year, you asked them for a number, we, ninety individuals came through our professional development schools at the University of Maryland, who are now teaching in Prince George's County, and some we had to turn away.
Okay.
Now, the, but that still doesn't meet their needs. So there are a lot more that we could, we want all of them.
Right.
Particularly if they are serving in our schools. But, um, we're, we're trying to, um, help individuals understand why that, those types of statements to our students are so destructive, or to our former teacher, I mean, our budding teachers are so destructive.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sanja Lochner, and from the Burn Heights community. And I just wanted to talk today about two things. First, I'd like to begin by applauding you for looking at the forward-thinking of where we're going as a district. Um, you spoke to student achievement being important, and you also spoke to community partnerships. And so the two questions that I have are kind of around these two areas. The first one, just thinking about class sizes, kind of reiterating what some others have said about class sizes. We know that the two-through-five formula is not working as effectively if you look at how the breakdown works across second, third, fourth, and fifth, and the fact that some class sizes end up, you know, grade levels end up with more students. So I know you spoke about connecting budget to students. So if you could speak a little more, how would it be different from what we currently have? So that's one thing. And then my second question is looking at the community partnerships. I'm thinking of your bylaw, nine-one-four-zero, that really looks at making sure the community has a voice, as you're doing here. But what can be done to really ensure there's more two-way communication? What, is there a way to get a community, um, committee going, um, a curriculum advisory committee, or something that will allow more voice in that the decision-making process?
The things that we've done, and we've worked with, um, PGC Tag, I think, if I'm, if I'm messing that name up, please excuse me, it's late. Um, and we work with other organizations. As a matter of fact, we talked to twenty-five-hundred parents in the construction of the presentation that the board will see on Thursday. And we did that in, in forums that took us out to the schools. And we know that parents don't always come to SASSR, Administration Building. So we actually try to engage with them every chance we get. There are mechanisms like this that we, um, that we want to continue. And we're trying to structure, um, meetings like this so staff are able to also get voice from parents. Not so much, but we say we want to get voice, and then we sit up and do all the talking. But we want parents to talk to us and to really give us some good feedback and suggestions and recommendations about their thoughts about their children. So that's, that's what we've attempted to do. We don't have a formal structure, um, to do that yet. Um, but that's why, that's one of the reasons we're doing these town hall meetings. And I would, I need to also add that our Board of Education last year did two of these in each district? Or one? You do two each? Two in each district? And I know Ms. Johnson did four. And so these were, and the whole purpose was to get voice from our parent, um, and, and community at large. And so we, we went out, and there were staff there, and we talked to parents during those, those events.
We definitely appreciate, and I think that you were trying to get feedback from College Board and other places, but having a more formal committee structure would also be very effective. And I think if had been in place in the past, I'm thinking of a committee of a hundred that was in place. So just looking at a formal process, that would be a, if that was needed.
Sure. Thanks.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Penny Mendosa. I'm a resident in Blainsburg. Um, we've just transferred our son last week to Blainsburg High School, so I'm actually a new parent to the system. Um, I've had a very horrible experience, and I'm, I'm sure that that's not indicative of the whole system. Um, but I pretty much feel like we're getting the runaround. Um, that, that's why we wanted to make sure to come today. Um, we're, we were asking about placing our son in AP classes. The counselor told us, oh, he needs to take a test before he can be determined to go in AP classes. I thought, wow, I've never heard of that, but I'm new to the system. You know, okay, um.
Counselor's telling you wrong.
Even then, I thought.
Yeah.
You should have told me when, where I could take the test, if that's the case.
Yeah.
He was in, um, Montgomery County. He was at Montgomery Blair. He was in honors chemistry. He's now placed in regular chemistry. So I've kind of been going back and forth, and I kind of get the feeling that I'm really just, you know, just getting a runaround. I've, um, tried to approach the principal. You sort of get the feeling that the teachers think they're gonna get in trouble if they refer you to the principal. I've talked to other parents, and I've gotten the same feeling. Um, we asked to meet with the principal. She said, I can't meet with you right now. And, you know, now we've been waiting for almost a week, just saying, sure, you know, we know your busy. When can you meet with us? Um, but basically, when I wrote the email to the principal saying, I've, I've never heard of such thing, and I actually, you know, asked around, I asked around, I used to work in the county execs office a few years ago, so through a lot of my work, I've met a lot of people in the school system. And they said, no, actually, we like to, but what I understand is, and what I hear you say, the more we demand of our kids, the better they deliver.
Right.
You know, they'll surprise you. And my son's not the one to be asking for AP classes, and he actually is. He's like, you know, I, I want to be challenged. So, um, when I wrote the principal and I said something about, we were told he had to do, um, a test before he could be placed in AP classes, she kind of wrote like a play on words, like, there is a test that's used for placement slash there's no test requirement before AP classes.
There's no test requirement. Let's be clear.
That's my understanding.
So let's, what I want to do is get your name and your son's name, so that we can help you at the school. We have to, I mean, that's enough of that foolishness. I mean, let's get the child an AP. I mean, and that's.
I mean, I thought you wanted to do that, you know?
Yes, so.
Thank you.
So, um, thank you all for coming this evening. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your recommendations. These are always helpful. And, and hopefully, we'll see all of you soon. Reminder that we do secondary school reform at the board meeting on Thursday, seven, seven oh five. Uh, so thank you so much for coming out.
Town hall meetings are special presentations by Prince George's County Public Schools. I'm Robin Breeden. Thanks for watching, and thanks for supporting the students in Prince George's County Public Schools, where children come first.